Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for Wednesday, November 6, 2019. As always, our meetings are broadcast live and recorded. As to the agenda, there are no changes in the agenda tonight, so with that stated, I'll go right into the agenda and start with, does anybody have any public input on a non-agenda item? Anybody for a non-agenda item? Not seeing any hands, we'll move on to Select Board Reports. And would you like to add?
I defer this evening.
You can. Allison?
Can you just get me for a second?
I can definitely do that. Jenna?
I'm also going to defer this evening.
But that's, no, Mark.
Sorry, that wasn't helpful.
Here I say, Mark Ratner.
As always, I sort of said, I'm going to talk about the Opera House, as always, because it's just a wonderful venue for us. We had the Opera House Committee meeting last week, doing a lot of work, working on getting some seat cushions for the balcony, which is hardwood seats, and we're working on that, which would be nice. We've been very successful putting the Blue Cafe up into the third floor, and now we're looking at, we're going to start what we call the Literary Salon on the second floor in the Tucker Room, which would just be authors and poets and stuff talking there, doing that maybe once a month or so. The first one will be Sunday, January 12. Upcoming shows, let's see, oh, before I get to the upcoming shows, CIF has moved their dates, Camden International Film Festival has moved their dates, because they were in competition with the Toronto Film Festival, I believe. So the dates this year will be the first week of October, from September 30th to October 1st and 2nd. So that may be of importance to a number of people. Jazz in June, which will be next, our second annual Jazz in June will be next June 11th through 14th. It will be two big night shows, a Friday night show and a Saturday night show, plus a lot of events at the Snow Bowl and some other things around town. And almost everybody is booked right now. One of the highlights is Saturday, the headline Saturday night are the Brubeck Brothers, which are the sons of Dave Brubeck, famous son of the Dave Brubeck Quartet, and they'll be out on tour celebrating the 50th anniversary of the famous Brubeck album, which just escaped me, the one with Take Five, "Time Out," which is the 50th one with Take Five, which, of course, one of the biggest jazz pop singles of all time. So that's very exciting to have them as the headliner on Saturday night. Upcoming things, there's, and I'm not really good at pronouncing this, this November 8th, which is tomorrow, Friday?
Friday.
Petcha Kucha?
Petcha Kucha.
Petcha Kucha, which is a really interesting format where people come and they give short presentations. And the presentations are 20 images by 20 seconds, what it says this year. It's always been a lot of fun. A lot of people go, it's a $5 charge, so it's really interesting. The next Maine-made music, which is where we look for the best in Maine musicians. David Mallett is headlining on Saturday, November 16th, with new artist Carolyn Cotter, who's really good. David Mallett, of course, is the father of the Mallett Brothers and longtime famous Maine folk singer. And the thing I want to talk about the most, and it's something I think is really special, Monday is Veterans Day, and we've started in the last couple of years doing free films at certain times of the year. And on this Veterans Day, we're going to have our Free Community Thank You film, and it's a movie called They Shall Not Grow Old, which Peter Jackson did. Peter Jackson's the director who did Lord of the Rings and The Hobbit and a number of other films. And he and his team took hundreds of hours or thousands of hours of films from World War I and went through, and they were asked by an agency in England to do this, they went through thousands of hours and came up with basically a movie where they colorized them, they made them look modern, and they actually added sound, so much so that they used lip readers to read the lips of the soldiers that were talking, and got people from the communities where they knew these soldiers are from to fill in the conversations. So it looks like you're looking at a modern movie, but all the film is from soldiers from World War I. And I've seen it, and I'm going to go again, because it's one of the most emotional, striking things I've ever seen in my life. I can't recommend enough, free film on this Monday, Veterans Day, called They Shall Not Grow Old, which is a documentary about World War I, which is, of course, the war to end all wars, and we know how that worked out.
What's happening?
It's at 7:00 PM. And I can't recommend enough, it's one of the most striking, emotional, and difficult things to watch, but I can't say enough about, it's one of the best things, I think, we've ever presented at the Opera House, and especially for the community. So that's my report.
Allison, do you want to go ahead?
Okay.
No, go ahead.
I think I'm ready. Okay. I never get tired of showing pictures of flooding town infrastructure. This was October, as advertised, October 28th. This is one of the larger ones, it's happening all the time. Jeff Sukforth, I mean, Jeff Sukforth. Jeff Sukforth just did a beautiful job on these, Jeff Senders. And, yes, and also Chuck Braun did some drone shots for us, too. So this was interesting. But we've spent a bit of time talking about Harbor Park, but it's, of course, not the only bit of town infrastructure that is vulnerable to climate change. And it's really kind of a good thing in a lot of ways that we never got around to that public landing revamp, because one of the things that, you know, the watershed school reports have certainly mentioned is, like, how is it possible that we don't even mention sea level rise in the downtown master plan and the public landing master plans? So, you know, that was, the boardwalk was flooded as well. That was, you know, 12.3-foot high tide, not, you know, still a ways off from the highest annual tide, which is closer to 13 feet. So this is not a once-in-a-blue-moon event. One of the other things that they say is that increased flooding events will increase runoff and pollution. And luckily, this is Harbor Park, and we don't have lots of pollution, but you can get a sense of it. This is mostly apples and leaves, but it gives you a good visual on, you know, how things do, things that are along the shoreline get pulled right out to, into the harbor. So lots to do. This is the other part of the seawall here, and you can see it's really submerged. The public landing, this is really pretty awesome that somebody like Jeff with all, you know, he did a 3D flyover, I don't even know all the terminology, but he collected a bunch of data when he was doing this also, and shared all these images with the town free of charge. So we're very appreciative of that, and Chuck Braun gave us some great stuff, too. You can see Dave Jackson was down there checking it out, there were a bunch of people. But anyway, so that's that. Then, right after that, I went to the Senator George Mitchell Center for Sustainability Solutions and listened to a talk about balancing different types of climate resilience activities. So one of the interesting things that has come up is, it's well-known that a lot of the time removing dams is a way to help a community be more resilient, help them be able to bounce back and have the land absorb these extreme flooding events. Of course, we know that part of climate change is a component of that, you also have to think about how to prevent it. And so we're trying to reduce our carbon footprint, and we often want to talk about renewable energy, like hydropower. So it was a really, really interesting talk about how to balance this, like, need to remove dams, but then also wanting to maximize the ability for hydropower, and so a lot of good contacts there. There are some programs at the university that, or classes where students, actually, if we were interested, we could get them to say, okay, let's, you know, take a look at Seabright, let's take a look at all the dams that the town has. Are there, you know, we've been told it's not financially feasible under this model to have hydropower, but maybe with some sort of evolving technology or a better-sighted dam, or, you know, the technology is always evolving. So that was really interesting. And then last, or almost last, we loaded a container for Syria, Syria Relief, right here in Camden. This was our second container that we sent out from Camden, right over on Mount Batty Street, and 40-foot shipping container filled with everything from gently-used clothing to medical supplies. We had Camden Town employees, Camden Select Board members, lots of people helping, so that was pretty awesome to be able to do that right from Camden, and I'm very appreciative for all the help. We're also coordinating with PAWS, they're expanding their surgical abilities at the animal shelter, so we were able to take some of the medical donations that we have from local hospitals and share those with PAWS. So I really love being able to do this project right in Camden. We had Pete Collation was there, testing the, trying to figure, I have some hospital beds that don't quite work, and he brought his electrical probes, and, you know, we're figuring out if they're worth fixing or not, so that was great. Oh, this is just a quick example of a natural falls, that's a little bit closer to what, when we talk about, you know, a waterfall from a dam versus, like, the natural falls, like, when the settlers arrived here and they said, okay, we have 13 falls on McGonagook River. This is kind of an example of sort of what you might expect things to look like. And then, very last but not least, is Ben following up on Mark's suggestion to get in touch with Stephanie. Stephanie actually got in touch with me, valued former Conservation Commission member, and we've been looking at this law that is coming down the pike, this extended producer responsibility, trying to look at how we can make recycling more sustainable. It's, as everybody or some know, the recycling markets have really tanked, and a lot of it is because companies just keep producing all this new packaging, and municipalities and transfer stations are just constantly in the sort of race to try to catch up with, okay, this new type of plastic that's been invented, how are we now going to recycle that? And it's just too much for government programs to keep up with. So looking at what we've done in the past, which is making the producers of these packaging types pay for the cost of recycling it. And there's a resolution that we can sign on to as a town, they're looking for, the NRCM is looking for towns to sign on to it. In our case, you know, we belong to microsolid waste, so I'm going to bring it up tomorrow there at our board meeting, and then see if it may be something that we can bring back to Camden after that, so that's it.
Perfect. Thank you, Allison. Thank you very much. Just briefly, the status of Route 1 North, if anybody is listening, they've started the process at the south end of Route 1 to meet one-on-one MDOT with the individual landowners to negotiate any temporary or permanent rights of way that may be required during construction or permanently. So everybody from, well, I guess it's a mile and a half from the state park up to the Lincolnville Line is going to have a session within the next month and a half with them, yeah?
When is, when are they looking at?
They still intend to bid the project in the spring, and start construction shortly after that, probably summer. And the first part, because it'll be for the first part of construction will be Springbrook Hill and Great Brook, first big pieces.
Do we have any updates on, trying to remember, that there were some special trees that?
Saved.
Oh.
There were two, did I mention? Those two, we've saved them.
Built it down, no pun intended.
Okay.
Well, it was just two really old, yeah, kind of nice trees. MDOT's done quite a bit of changes, and not perfect, and it can't be, it's a construction project.
Are there, is there a final design for the cul, for the stream crossing on both of those?
I believe there is. I believe there is. Yep. Yep. Yes. So anyway, I just want to update everybody so they know it's coming. If they haven't, phone calls have started to various residents.
Did you see those points?
Absolutely.
Are they in the town, or are they online?
I don't think we have that one.
Post them online, the latest version.
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that, but I'm not sure.
Wondering if we did, I think we might have.
I think we might have, but I'm not sure the cul which she's talking about is in that packet, I saw it as separate. I can get it from Ernie and out from MDOT and publish it. I'll do it.
But the general thing is, like, somebody could go on and see, and this is now the non-negotiable, there's no more negotiating after this, or maybe there is, or people can try.
They could try, but it's 95%. It's always changed during construction.
Is it changed?
And we'll wait and see what the bids look like.
Painting, the painting?
No, can't do it. Sorry. That's federal regulation because of the speed of the road. Anyway, I know, I know, it's regulations, this is crazy engineering.
Yeah, I mean, it's just federal, it's the same road that goes right through here and there, all of a sudden, they say one thing, and then it turns out, you know.
I know, I do. With that completed, item two, we go on to the approval of the board minutes from October 22nd, 2019, of which there were four of us in attendance. Was there any comment on the?
I have no comment, I looked at them, I have no comment.
Very nicely done.
I thought they were, too. I thought they were very well done, Kendall, thank you again. With that, can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we approved the board minutes from October 22nd, 2019.
Second.
All's in favor, it'd be 4-0. Thank you very much. And this evening, we're lucky to, at very short notice, ask Mr. Stern to come and give us a little chat about Knox County Budget Committee. And basically, this is started from a conversation about, there are people like me that don't know a lot, lot, lot about Knox County and the processes you go through, and I personally would like to hear a little bit more about the process you have to go through, and maybe some of the challenges you see coming down. And lastly, whether we can be of any assistance in that regard. Would you mind coming up, Randy, and giving us a little chat? Thanks for coming, appreciate it very much.
Hey, Randy.
Out there would be great.
You can move stuff out of the way there.
And just, if you turn on the mic, I appreciate it. Randy, just a button there, turn it green. That's it. Thank you so much.
So, what do you want to know?
Well, I mean, tell us a little bit about the process, tell us about the process of the Budget Committee is going through and going to go through.
The budget process starts, I believe it's in August, and every department puts together their proposal for the upcoming year and submits it to the administrator. And then the administrator and the finance director sits down with each individual department head and review their request, massage the numbers, agree or disagree on what they recommend to the Budget Committee and the county commissioners. So that takes till about the end of September, and then in October, budget books come out, and the county does a great job between Andy and his secretary. They do a great job, set us up, so week by week, we're laid out which departments we're going to look at, historically, how much we funded, looking forward, what we expect to see come down the line. So it's a, I've been there, I don't know, seven years, I think, now, maybe eight years on the county budget. Bob Duke, who's the chairman again this year, has been there a little longer than I have, but Bob has also been a county commissioner, so.
Is that currently one representative each of the towns that are within?
No, there's technically nine representatives for, like, 18 towns and the islands and whatnot. So a couple of years ago, Camden was actually split in two parts. I represented the north half of Camden and
It's the craziest thing.
South half, and Rockport was covered by Bob Duke, and we ended up having a little gerrymandering, whatever you want to call it, and
It's gerrymandering.
We looked at the numbers
District.
I'm now representing all of Camden, about 4,950 people, last I checked.
Right.
And Bob is covering both Rockport and Hope, as it turns out, which the numbers are pretty equal. And I could give you the breakdown of the nine.
No, I just was curious, I was curious of the representation, how was gerrymandering?
It just, it was kind of strange that Camden was split in half, and, but.
Because how did they do that? I saw that it got changed with the reapportionment, but how did they do it if you lived north of McGonagook River, you went and voted in Rockport and?
Vote on what?
Because we're supposed to be able to vote on our county representative, and so how did they say, well, how did you vote, how was it by district if Camden was split into two districts and we all go to the same place?
Position was appointed.
Oh, it was appointed?
I took over for Sid Linsley when he couldn't finish out his term, and then I took out papers and ran, and this last time, I didn't take out papers, but made myself a write-in candidate and got written in again, so.
Oh, I see. The term is for three years?
Three years.
Four years, according to the charter.
According to the book, I expired, so they haven't updated the book.
I see. Not literally.
I was over, I took to reading the Knox County Charter last night, and they're one of the first towns in Maine, apparently, or counties in Maine to have a charter, but I was surprised by the districts, because we now have, we have one representative, Rockland has two. Camden pays by far the most of any town. It doesn't quite feel like
Based on?
I know that, you know, they do the reapportion and the
Welcome to Camden.
Because it's done by, you know, the amount you pay is done by valuation, and it appears that the representation is done by, do we have half as many residents as Rockland?
I'm not sure.
No, I don't think so.
Rockland's got, like, 7,200.
Yeah, we're about two-thirds.
So how Rockland ends up with two representatives, and we end up with one, and we're paying?
If we haven't been able to find half a representative that's willing to cut off an arm and a leg to go, I don't know. I mean, it's kind of hard to break it up.
So really, if you develop this budget, it's X millions of dollars, until Allison's point, the apportionment of what each, 19, I think you said, towns, whatever there is, 18, that's done by some valuation, certainly not by
I believe it's all done
Strictly by valuation.
Assessment, total real estate assessment?
State assessment.
Oh. Oh.
There you go.
I mean, and the amount, we pay a lot more than any, any other town, which, okay, fine, Camden has the most in property value, but to not, to have only half the representation as Rockland is something to consider for the next reapportionment process, so, which might be coming up, I think, in 2021, so we could bring that.
I don't know, they just did it a couple of years ago. And that's a state determination.
Well
We had to submit the suggested changes, and the state ultimately approved them, which there's no reason why they wouldn't, but.
Right, but if we're, it would be, maybe when it comes time to suggest changes again, it would be maybe worth making sure Camden gets as much representation as possible, or just a conversation to keep in the back of our mind. I've never looked at this before, so I was like, oh my gosh.
That's not my role. I mean, I hate to say, I'm a committee member who just looks at the numbers and listens to the
So it would be commissioners, maybe, that we would say that, too?
The commissioners would be, or go right to the county administrator.
Right. So at this point in time, Randy, you're, it sounds like you're in the death throes, the heat of the budget development process.
Yeah, we're about, I'd say, 75% through at this point. I think we're hoping to wrap up the majority of the work tomorrow night, for a matter of fact, and then, once we've gone through all the departments, we will then have a public hearing with a final vote on the proposed budget for 2020.
Have there been any areas in the budget discussions to date that have been in strong contention amongst the committee members, who usually are?
Again, because of the process, the budgets that are proposed are pretty clean. You know, I mean, by the time the department heads, and most of them are the same people come year after year, so the Budget Committee knows who they are.
Sure.
Tim Carroll, who's now the sheriff, has brought the budget, I think, every year pretty much since I've been there, and he brings a clean budget. And this year, he actually, he and I talked about it after the last meeting, he laid out not only just his budget, but he broke down the budget into how much he has no control over versus their wish list, for lack of better terms. And his wish list is like 2%, 3% of the whole budget. I mean, they don't bring a lot of fluff, they really don't. This year
No control.
Can I ask a question about that? There's just some recent news that I think North Haven and Vinyl Haven are looking to have better representation from the Sheriff's Department. Is that something that's in his budget now to
It was discussed, I mean, I could read you the whole paragraph that tells you about their increase this year. I mean, I've got the kind of a snapshot view that Andy puts out of every department, but
Okay. I just curious, because I just made the news in this past week, that the two islands are looking for better representations. Just curious.
One of the big challenges is getting somebody that'll go out there.
Right.
I mean, North Haven's a small island, there's not a lot of entertainment on the island, and to get people that are willing to go out and do that job is pretty tough.
Yeah.
Do they keep track of who, which towns use the most services, or, like, I look at how much, I don't, I don't know how much the sheriff covers at Camden, but it doesn't seem like much at all, and then other towns probably weigh really heavily on, lean really heavily on the sheriff to do their policing, but then we all pay the same, or Camden pays a lot. Is it, is that a conversation that happens, like, where?
Sure does. I had a, this year, I had somebody actually had, like, six questions for the Sheriff's Department, and I forwarded those to the administrator, and he forwarded them to the sheriff, and the sheriff then sent them back with his responses, because every town's got different needs.
Mm-hmm.
You know, some, Camden's very fortunate, has a police department. We don't need the same type of interaction with the Sheriff's Department or the state police. You get towns like Warren that don't have that in their budget, and they, which they've chose, I mean, I mean, but that's their say.
Does the, is there a cutoff, is there a, once you've used this amount of, you know, county sheriff services, you get?
Now, you get guys on, you've got to understand, at night, there's typically only a couple of guys on patrol, and
The whole county?
They're covering 19, in theory, 19 towns, which is, obviously, they're not going to run out to some of the islands in the middle of the night, but they're spread pretty thin.
Yeah, I bet.
You know?
From the budget development, I know you're on the budget development side, but, you know, we keep, we talk a lot about locally, we're doing things with Rockport and, you know, trying to get synergy to, you know, resources, regionalization, as we call it, but it's a little smaller basis, it's just the local adjacent towns. What about Knox County? Is there more discussions about regionalization of activities?
Every year.
Every year.
Actually, Andy had put something in the budget this year, and he mentioned it last week, that he's got ideas for three or four proposals for next year of more regionalized services that he would like to bring for suggestion to fit into the budget.
Yeah, great. That's, that's, it seems to me, that's just personally, it seems to me one of the keys of future.
It's great, but if you're a taxpayer who's living on the edge, it's not good. Every time you add additional services, your taxes are going up.
It's a long view, it's a long view.
But if you take it away from the towns, in some ca, you know, in some cases, we're paying for it.
Yeah, but you can also look at it, there's towns that don't use those services, don't want those services, and have chosen not to, and you're going to force taxes on the people who don't want services.
Like us and the sheriff.
I'm not talking sheriff, I'm talking budget, budget in general.
But I'm saying, it happens with, you know, it's going to happen with all things that
Our role is to look at the numbers and ask good questions and develop the budget that, you know, and review what the administrator has recommended, and hopefully bring the best budget we can for the taxpayers.
Yeah, I agree with that. It's just that history has proven across the country that regionalization has a longer view of all-round prosperity versus the little fiefdoms that we each control and own, that we all try, we're not islands, and we, sometimes we work like we're islands. And Knox County seems to me to be the mechanism from which we can And Knox County seems to me to be the mechanism from which we can, maybe less, less wait in certain areas.
You look at the county, we have the jail.
Yep.
You have a Sheriff's Department, you have an airport that serves everybody. I mean, there are a number of areas that the regionalization goes on, a lot of people don't use the airport, you know?
Why are we paying so much for the airport?
But it's there. It also provides a tremendous amount of revenues to the area because of people flying in and providing services throughout, so.
And the courthouse and all these pieces that we have, and then the county seat in Rockland, I believe, right? But...
The airport actually doesn't operate, that doesn't operate at a deficit, is that correct? We don't lose money on the airport? We don't have...
We don't lose money?
I'm trying to look at this...
We're spending money on the airport.
Well, it says total revenues.
Everybody's in the airport, crazy.
If the total expenditures are 521...
But we still invest money every year at the airport.
And there are, a lot of rural airports are receiving some grants and federal subsidies annually.
Jeff Northgraves, who's been running the airport, he's done a great job, and I think this is his last year.
Yeah, he's a good manager.
I believe so.
It looks like I'm not losing money.
Tomorrow night, we're reviewing the airport.
He's a good guy.
Says it is.
Yeah. It's very much like, EMA Director, EMA Director has done a fantastic job.
Ray?
Goes out and gets grants and, you know, has really covered his budget tremendously and has saved the county a lot of money over the years.
Right. Right. Well, as you well know, we, we've written a letter to selectmen to Knox County about our feelings about pushing for economic development across the, the county. Now, we know that, I guess, the, if I'm reading the line right, the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission has been zeroed out. Am I reading that correctly?
Which one?
The Midcoast Regional Planning Commission.
They're, they're closing up shop.
Okay. What is going to replace that for economic development for the county?
Regional planning for the county.
Regional planning.
There are talks about, I think, MACAD would like to take on part of that role, but they're not going to take on the whole responsibility.
Yeah, but is there any talk about who is going to take over the responsibility? I know this is out of the budget discussion, but you're closer to it than I am, as well because the budget's going along here, but I don't read any money being spent in that regard.
Well, that's because the department's going away. We're not going to allocate money to something that doesn't exist.
No.
I mean, I'm sorry.
But the function goes away with it.
It sure does.
Okay.
Because we don't have anybody that has stepped forward and said, we can provide all the services that you had recently.
So I can answer that. So MACAD can provide all the regional planning services, services that the RPC provided, and on top of that, they can also do additional economic development planning, grant writing.
And maybe for the benefit of the audience, could you explain what MACAD is, please?
So it's the Midcoast Economic Development District, and it's, it's both a regional planning organization as well as an economic development district. And by virtue of being a member of an economic development district, we'll, we have access, and Camden has chosen to do so, so we have access to economic development administration funds, Northern Border Regional Commission funds, and a bunch of other programs that you need to be a member of a district in order to apply for.
And the constituents of that group are members, the...
So it's part of Cumberland County, Sagittahawk, not Lincoln, some communities in Lincoln County, and then some communities here in Knox County.
So it's a broader view of the, of the respective counties, plural, okay? Just want to be clear, because everybody doesn't understand the acronyms like we do sometimes, I mean, we're folk.
I think right now, there are five towns that are paying MACAD for services, Camden, Port Rockland, Thomaston, South Thomaston, and I'm drawing a blank on the fifth one at this point.
St. George.
But that also leaves basically 14 communities, and they're all aware of the services that they provide, but have chosen not to contract out with them, and...
I'd argue that's not quite...
So the, the big difference that I see is that...
That's a fact. I mean...
No, I don't think it's a fact. I think some communities aren't as aware of others about MACAD and what it can offer.
And whose fault is that? As a budget committee member...
Oh, I'm not blaming anyone. I don't think it's a fault.
We're asked to look at the numbers, and I know the five towns that are using it probably are over 50% of the population of the county.
So there's all, there's, we can argue about MACAD and how useful...
There's no argument here. I mean, I'm just here, I'm just here providing information.
Well, there's a little bit of argument. I think you and I are both very comfortable arguing, so it's, I mean, it's, it's fine. It is, it's a little bit argumentative, I would say. But we can discuss the, the past value of MACAD to the towns that are members, and there are certainly arguments for and against that you feared we well-versed in. What is different this year is, and I actually had to spend a fair amount of time learning about this, because the county is not something that I pay attention to, but I went to this meeting with somebody from the DOT and somebody from the Main Coastal Program and all, and somebody from Lincoln County and all representatives from, I think, basically every town, every town in Knox County, close to it, were represented at that. And what was made clear from the, the guy from DOT and the Main Coastal or the Agriculture and Forestry Department, is that we're, because the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission, which a lot of other towns were a member of, because that's folding, we are losing access to, all of the towns that were part of that are losing access to a certain pot of money. And then the other thing that's being...
You mean grants, when you say that, right?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. From the, both federal and state sources. And then it's also, a lot of the time, it's this, it is the smaller towns that need help with things like shoreline, you know, if somebody needs to update their shoreline zoning ordinance or their comprehensive plan, or need advice on permitting marijuana cultivation facilities or things that, you know, Camden has, does have a lot of staff that can do some of those things, but the smaller towns don't have somebody on staff that can do these things.
Again, Camden, taxpayers have chosen to fund the staff, as you just said, where some of these towns have chosen not to have large administrative offices. That's a choice they make.
Well, then, we have to pay for their sheriff budget, but either way, there is a need to do some things. You look at what Lincoln County has done, for instance. They funded a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of regional planning. And so when I went to this meeting, that was the other proposal that was on the table. It was, okay, we're, are we really, as Knox County, not going to have a regional planning commission? This doesn't seem smart because of all of the regional planning that needs to happen, whether it be solid waste or landfills closing, it doesn't, it, there's, there's a lot that can be accomplished by working together like Lincoln County. So we were kind of presented this idea of maybe we can spend a couple hundred thousand dollars. It wasn't said just like that, but you can see how much Lincoln County's spending on it. And then some people said, hold on, that doesn't make sense. Let's just take, spend a whole lot less and have MACAD take on a lot of these responsibilities. And so to not do any regional planning in terms of looking at, okay, affordable housing, if we're just going to study that in Camden, in Rockport, and all the, all alone, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense because there's so much crossover. So I guess, this is a really small amount of money, and Camden, Camden's rate, we're going to spend $100,000 more. It looks like the assessment is going up for Camden by about $100,000.
1.6 million.
So we're actually, and, and you know, most of the time, Camden just goes along with that. It's, we're, we don't really have much of a choice. But we're already, for this specific thing, we will be saving money. Camden has a rare opportunity to save a little bit of money by not having to pay individual dues to MACAD and working together a little bit, so that maybe we can do some of these big things a little better. So I, I hope you consider...
One of the challenges I've had is, I'm there representing the town of Camden, but we're also representing the county. So...
Of course.
Last week, we had a town, and there was a member of the public who was also a select board member of that town, and they flat-out said, we know what's available, we have chosen, and the taxpayers don't want to spend the money. So again, I'm, I'm on the fence, and I abstained from voting last week because I truly have not solidified which direction I feel.
I see.
But that town, flat-out said, we don't want to spend the money. We don't see the benefit to our town, and we've been encouraged from our constituents not to be spending that money.
Yeah, we're not, I wouldn't suggest that it's an easy conundrum at all. It's, I'm sure it's difficult.
You're there, and you're trying to look for the best of everybody, and also trying to keep taxes down.
Yeah.
Randy, has the, has the proposal like Allison described with MACAD been presented before? Obviously, it's different now because the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission is not going to exist.
There was K red before MACAD. It, it's gone through multiple iterations just since I've been there.
Yep.
And flat-out, they've been terrible presentations, and that's why in the last few years, they haven't even gotten funding.
I see.
Historically, there's a little bit of a bad feeling about it, is that...
Not a bad feeling. I mean, we leave it open, but...
The bang for the buck was weak?
Yeah, I, I read some of the old minutes, too.
Good way to put it.
Okay.
Can we talk about a different, just take it off? I know we're running out of time, probably, but dispatch. I don't want to put you on the spot with your, you know, only talk as much as you want, but to me, did that turn out well? I don't...
Did, did it turn out well?
Well, I personally, I personally, no, I'll say...
You're asking a budget committee member a question about...
Allison, can you spell out what it is that you're asking about?
Yeah, I'm thinking of a better way to ask it. I personally, just as an uninformed citizen who used to really appreciate being able to call my local office here, and the experience that I had communicating, and I've heard this from a lot of people, that the, the shift to the countywide dispatch system, while it seemed to make all the sense in the world, and I assume it does, but for the everyday citizen, it's been a negative thing for some people, or is there a way, I think, how much are we spending?
A lot.
It's a lot of money, and what if...
That's an assessment that is separate from the budget.
Right.
Right. So do you guys get to weigh in on that, too?
We listen to it, and we, we, yeah, we vote on it as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Is, do you, are we, is, is that system going to last forever? Is there any chance it would ever go back to the other way?
No.
Do you have a choice?
I think, I think the gentleman sitting right here in the front would probably be a better person to answer that question.
Yeah.
A choice? Is that something Camden, like with McCo Solid Waste, we could say, I guess, we just want to, well, no, that's a terrible example.
Not...
Can we say we're not going to do it this year?
What, do away with communications?
We're going to do our own dispatch, or technically...
No, I don't think that's going to happen. You, Chris?
I don't think it's going to happen. Is it technically an option? Is it tech...
No.
So we are forever...
We would have to build the infrastructure to do that.
Millions.
I'm not, I don't know. So basically, no, probably not. We'll just keep working and providing for this.
I think part of that was the...
Go ahead, tell her.
The, the regionalization of comm centers was a statewide, really a nationwide push after 9/11. And so a lot of that comes down from the states consolidating communication centers.
Yes.
So all that equip, all that 911 equipment that's in there in Rockland is paid for by, most of it comes from the federal government, the infrastructure for a lot of that, a lot of the towers and things like that.
Is it a 911 surcharge on your phone bill?
Yes, yes.
Also, all that infrastructure to build the system is paid for through, as the state controls the funding.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's...
Interesting information. Randy, first of all, I want to say it again, thanks for coming and listening. You know, by the way, this is, as I started this conversation, it's a little bit about a learning curve for us, too. Especially for me. So we're not trying to put anybody in any corner, but needless to say, I can honestly say the town of Camden and the select board has written in support of regionalization of services.
We've received the letters from both the select board and the town manager.
And I get the smaller towns, and they're concerned about dollars, but there are, there are ways to find a way around that, because if we truncate that, I'm afraid we're going to not do the best service for our county and towns. That's, that's, that's my feeling.
One last question, at least for me, or first question for me. Is there anything we can do to help you do your job?
Good question.
Upspending money? Point? I mean, I ain't saying we're three-quarters of the way through the budget process, it's a little late to come in and try to, to help. Seven or eight years, I've had zero input from citizenship or even the select board for the town of Camden, as far as the...
But that's one of the things we'd like to change going forward.
I mean, I'm really uninformed. I was like, I'm like, oh, an airport, look at that.
It's great to hear from people. And the person that had the questions this year, like I say, I forwarded them on to the county administrator. He then forwarded them to the sheriff, got the answers, and we funnel them back through, which I thought was good, that we're, we'll get them done within four or five days, so the citizens can have some input into the budget process. That's who we represent.
Absolutely. And to that end, may be it clear that we are looking to help, to reinforce, to identify these, some of them, which you discussed right now, some of these crucial issues with the county, because, not for any reason, so the taxpayers of Camden, we do pay a lot of money, and fine, that's what it is. But, but there's a bigger picture than just that. There's a bigger picture.
The county budget's, what, 7%, 7.5% of Camden's overall budget?
Yeah, right.
I mean, when you think of it, it's a pretty small number.
It's growing all the time.
But, you know, I'm sure in the future, there are going to be more questions, but I think we should move on the agenda now. But I really, really, really want to thank you for coming and listening to us. I mean, I know it's not always easy, but we're, but we're learning, Randy, we're learning. I'm learning.
The biggest thing for this year, the drivers for the budget are salaries and health insurance, and those are driving about 3, 3.5% of the, I think the overall number that Andy brought this year is about 5.5% increase.
Increase total?
A total increase on the budget is what he proposed.
I see.
What, what comes out of the final meetings, I don't know those numbers at this point, obviously, but, and he listed out, there are like nine drivers that are really pushing that budget, and most of those in the departments are 20, $30,000 increases for, I think, maybe communications had a little bit higher requests this year for, but overall, I think, total increase is like 440,000 for the entire budget. But again, the majority of it are untouchables.
Right.
Now, I'll be perfectly honest with you, when, shortly after I get on the Budget Committee, they did a countywide pay reevaluation and salary adjustments, and I'm not a fan of it, because every year, there's an automatic step increase. So you may be a hard charger, trying to do the great job, you're going to get the same step increase as I am if I want to come in and just do bare bones minimum.
Yeah, got that.
Both basically get the same raises, and you, cost of living is, is fact, you know?
Can be a disincentive.
So it, it can be, and it is very difficult to acknowledge good workers.
Right.
It's just the way the budget is, but it drives the numbers every year.
Well...
When you get to this bigger budget, you know, personnel is, is a big piece of it.
Well, I hope this will be the start of a more open communication, at least from us, to go on back and forth, so, not that others haven't, I'm not suggesting others haven't done it before, but I just wanted to learn a lot more. I'm getting a better picture of it myself, and we're going to have you back sometime if you're willing to come.
I, I sat in this room for a number of years doing town budget before I did the county. And I'll be honest, and I, I think I talked to Otter last year about it, I think the town of Camden Budget Committee is insane, why you would have 25 members on a budget committee Why you would have 25 members on a budget committee is a non-workable number.
No comment.
They rarely y'all show up. It's like you were lucky to get a quorum. It's like you almost have to start with that many just to get 10 people in the room.
Right.
I'm sorry, we got a county who we represent, and we got nine, and we get a quorum every.
Requires a charter change, right?
No minutes on your webs, on the website after 2014?
I guess you need to talk to the administrator about that. I don't do the website.
Don't pass that along.
Thanks so much for coming.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate it very much. And on a short notice, too, I realize that, thank you.
No, I had no problem coming down, and I think you guys know how to get a hold of me. If people got questions, please feel free to reach out, because I represent the town.
Thank you, sir. More to follow.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Moving on with our meeting, we have the next discussion, or actually approval of bid for the work on the West Dam. And I believe that'd be David.
Do we need to do wastewater commissioners?
Do we need to do wastewater commissioners?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. No, we don't, it's a budget area.
Yeah, dams. What makes budget?
Dams.
But sometimes we just go into the wastewater just.
You want to just.
No, we shouldn't. It doesn't, I agree that we should not, but we have, yeah, it makes.
You don't think so either.
Mr. David, you have the floor.
Yes, we had.
Over the pipes.
Talking about the West Dam mazes, and we had three bids to, the main part of the projects is changing out the gate and replacing I-beams on the spillway and sluiceway that are in bad, bad shape. We had quite a, a spread of bids. The low bidder was Kavanaugh Marine, they're a company out of Rhode Island. But they, they do work in Maine, and they've got contacts in Maine with, with other contractors as well. Their bid was 103,150. Chesterfield Associates, a main company, their bid was 177,100 in field diving service right here in Camden, 219,000. So I, I spent some time with Kavanaugh Marine. He, he came up and we went to the West Dam and talked about the project, because, because of the, quite a difference in, in bids, his being so low that I want to make sure that
Oh, yeah.
He understood what the project entailed and he could actually do it for that amount of money.
Sure. Just a question, the Kavanaugh bid, you said 103,150?
Right.
And that included two of the three alternate bid amounts, correct?
Yeah, that's.
Excluded the replacing the spillway and walkway wood structures, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because I wasn't, the other numbers weren't, I was having trouble with a little bit with the math, because I think I see that on, let me just reiterate then, on the bid form for Chesterfield, they're 160, 176, 600 plus 500, is that correct?
Right, for the removal of trees. But I, with Kavanaugh, what happened, when I had that conversation, it came out that he misunderstood what I wanted on that second page.
That's what I thought. I saw that, that's why the number was 23,2, and it didn't make any sense.
With Kavanaugh, on the front of the bid page, there's 109,350 circled, yeah, to the 103,150, what's the difference there?
Yeah, that was, the 109,350, that's replacing all the, the wood structure, the spillway structure.
Which you're not doing.
Right, we're going to try to save that structure.
Right, okay.
So the low bidder is, is Kavanaugh, is 103,150?
Correct.
Apples to apples.
Question?
Of course.
Where are we getting the money?
So we budgeted $300,000 in the current budget for this project, because setting out, we were concerned that we didn't have a good handle on what the scope of it would be and what the, you know, potential issues that could come about as the project progressed, like with the Seabright Dam. So we were very, very conservative when we budgeted for it.
So we're.
Well, Linda, budget.
Well-protected.
Yes, and this, and if everyone remembers, this is going to be financed through inter-fund borrowing. So we're going to be spending out of the unassigned fund balance and then paying ourselves back.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, the other.
Going to start? When can they, when are they going to start? Is this going to be pretty much right away before that?
Yeah, yep, they said, when I talked to them at the dam, that they, they could start in November. Yeah, and it is, it'll be good to get that done before the, the lake really freezes up.
Yeah, because you're going to do diving, no?
No.
Yeah, then, well, there, there might be a little bit of diving, not necessarily, though.
There's coffer?
Nope, no coffer dam, that takes a permit, that takes four to six months, so staying away from that.
This is the part I'm so interested in, because I don't know how.
Ironically, you can sandbag and do the same thing as a coffer dam.
You, you can't.
But as long as you take all the sandbags out, there's no permit required.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Hmm.
They've done that.
Really like to see that.
Yes, yeah, that's for sure. A coffer dam would be very difficult there, because you're right on bedrock.
Oh, yeah.
You'd have to put a lot of support.
And a lot of pumping.
A lot of sandbags, it seems like, but.
Okay.
Not 13 feet of water that holds back, or?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm taking the lake down as fast as I can right now.
No comment.
Mark, pick up two questions. How, you're going to have to stop the dam to, to make the repair. How is that going to, is that going to affect anybody?
No, it shouldn't, you know, right now, we're over two feet shallower in the lake than we are in the summer. You know, I've got, got standards in this winter and summer. We drop it way down in the, in the winter anyway. And the first thing we're going to do is, we're going to change out the gate on the dam first, and then we can take the sandbags out. If, if we happen to have a bunch of rain events and we need the, the West Dam, they can continue to work on the spillway and, and the I-beams and allow water to go through the West Dam.
I see.
Yeah, so that, I'll be, I'll, I'll be happy when the, the new gate's in and we can.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Okay, second question. You're recommending the Kavanaugh bid of 103,150?
Yes.
Plus a $5,000 contingency?
Yes.
Yes, the contingency is because, because the gate is leaking so badly, really couldn't get up the sluiceway to really survey everything, and in case we run into something that we don't expect, we'd have a little bit of.
Okay.
You want to, I can.
I would think so.
I would add a little bit.
Okay, Ken, you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept the Kavanaugh Marine bid, which is 103,150 plus a $5,000 contingency, and that we round it up for a total of 110,000, not to, not to exceed 110,000.
Second for discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, discussion. The gentleman, I'm sorry, I missed your hand. Would you please come up here, sir, if you don't mind? Sorry about that. I'll give him the microphone, Jeremy.
Thank you. I happen to be from Chesterfield Associates.
Oh, introduce yourself, please.
I'm sorry, Dave Allen, and.
You don't have to lean in that.
Excuse me?
You don't have to lean in like that.
I've learned that Kavanaugh Marine is not licensed to do business in the state of Maine, and nor do they have a certificate of good standing. And I want to point out that we are a local company, and we're prepared to go to work next week.
Great, thank you so much for coming.
Oh, because Kavanaugh, because they're from Rhode Island.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kavanaugh's from Rhode Island, a little Compton, Rhode Island.
I picked up on that, just the Rhode Island part as well. I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of turn. It's a tremendous, obvious price spread, but if that is in fact the case, I feel like it's pretty important that we get to the bottom of it before we make a.
Licensing requirements.
Dave has to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, nope, I hadn't thought of that as being an issue. He, he said he's worked in Maine before. I don't know, Bill, what do you, do you have any?
Get to check it out.
What we need there?
I'm afraid I have no idea. I would not anticipate this tonight.
I'm me either, I don't think any of us do.
Even did I.
Do you recommend, Bill, is this something we should look into, or something we should just?
Maybe, maybe you could approve a contingent on.
That's what I was going to say. You'd have to be a contingent on, on, you can't do work in Maine without a license. I mean, that's going to have to be. So that's kind of a black and white. If it's not, we'll have to go to Plan B, whatever Plan B is. So I'd have to modify that motion.
Okay, so just a question before we modify. You have spoken to them and you're confident that they can do the job?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Then a contingent upon their having a proper license for, to do the work.
Second. Discussion.
Is that enough, Bill? Is that how we should handle it?
Sounds good.
May I ask for one more revision, which is about the, the certificate of good standing to do work in Maine, as well as a license, which were the two items that Mr. Davies brought up?
I've never heard of that.
Separate things, what else?
Either, but I think it's worth looking into, just because it's been.
Bill, is there such a thing in the state of Maine?
Yes, but not in the way that it was described. So I would think just understanding if the company is licensed to do business would be sufficient.
I would agree. I would agree. I've never heard of that in any state I've worked in. But that doesn't mean it doesn't happen. But anyhow, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All's in favor of Kavanaugh.
Can you just restate the motion, to be clear?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the bid by Kavanaugh, which the bid is 103,150, and then we would like to add a $5,000 contingency, which would make it 108,000. I recommend that we round that up to 110, so that it costs us not to exceed 110,000. And that Kavanaugh be examined to make sure that they have a license to do the work in Maine, contingent upon that.
Is that, is that what you seconded, or not? Okay, just to be clear. Go ahead, Allison.
I, I guess part of me, if it turns out that they just didn't have a license and we have to say, you know what, you really need a license, and I guess part of me cares about what the explanation is for that. A large part of me. I also don't want to be an obstructionist and be, you know.
Sure.
But it does, it does feel like that matters, depending on how.
I, I would, I plan to, I would come back to you if, if they don't have a license, is that?
If they didn't have one. So not like they can just get one really quick, and I don't know what the process is for getting one, but if they apply to do this, I don't know what's, what's typical, but to, to go, to, to submit a response to an RFP with, and then, and not mention, well, we're not licensed, but we've, to do work in Maine, but we, should we be awarded the bid, then blah, blah, blah. I guess the fact that they didn't, you know.
Mark, agree with him.
I have two things. Number one, I would amend that so that they have an existing license. So if they don't have one, then we'd like to hear about it, if they don't have one. And also, the other question I meant to ask is, what is the timeliness of that, if we have to change and go to another.
Select board meeting.
You know, we're two weeks away from our next, our next meeting. Would you need, what's the timeliness and the necessity of getting it done quick?
Well, here again, it really depends on the weather.
Yeah, yeah.
Holidays.
We've been trying to figure out.
So if, if we need a special meeting to address this?
And I, I think there's some, I think there's some additional work that would need to be done apart from.
This scope?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it might, frankly, it might need to go back out to bid. Wouldn't you say so, based on the responses that you've received?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good possibility, that's right.
Well, we have a motion, did you agree with that addition to the second?
I amended to, they need to have an existing license.
Yeah, I mean, I think. If you're comfortable, I mean, all due respect, the information we just got came from a competitor, I think that we need to, you know.
Absolutely.
Use a grain of salt and do our due diligence in a proper way.
Absolutely.
But if you're saying that, in your experience, you've met with them and you feel like the professional can do the job, I believe that.
Yeah, I checked, I did check references. There was a town in Massachusetts where they put a gate in on a dam, for example, and had nothing but good things to say about them.
If they have, I mean, if they're properly licensed, I don't see a.
Yep. Last, that's.
Or if it's normally a quick, is, is this common for out-of-state companies to get license, you know, to?
Sure.
Get licenses quickly, based on whether or not they are awarded jobs?
That's kind, that's kind of state-by-state thing. Some states are very easy.
In the RFP specs.
It's easy to get a construction license, in some states it's not. And I assume the specifications require that they have a license to operate in Maine. That's kind of an unwritten rule, any construction.
Say that in the bid specifications?
No, but I think I'll start putting that.
Yeah, I think you would.
Specifications.
I think you would. Well, we have a, we have a motion with three qualifications on it, and seconded, any more discussion? No, oh, we got Bill.
In the 30-second research on my phone here.
Thank you.
The suggestion is that some kind of a permit or license would be required if there was going to be a change in the levels or flows after the work was done, which requires another level of analysis, as opposed to just working on the structure itself.
Yeah, there'll be no change in.
But I don't know if that's true or not, because this is very quick, but just for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that's all the case.
Wikipedia.
Yeah, we'll dig into that.
Okay, all right. We have a motion, seconded, all's in favor. Propose.
I mean, I'm.
You have to vote one way or the other, dear. I'll go like this.
I didn't want to make everybody repeat the motion one more time, but.
I can do it.
Thank you.
Sure. I make a motion that we accept the bid from Kavanaugh, which is now at 103,150, along with a contingency fee of $5,000, which should add up to 108,150, and that we round it up to, so that there's, it does not go over 110,000.
That's hard to sign.
Contingent upon they're having, having, currently having a license to do the work.
Existing.
Existing license to do the work.
It's hard for me to know if that matters or not. I'm more comfortable with Dave's discretion, but.
Agreed. All right, back to the motion and the second. All's in favor of the motion and seconded motion. All's in favor. Three, four, again.
Voting against.
Are you comfortable with the motion, Dave?
Four to one.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you very much, Dave, and best of luck with whatever happens here. To the six item on the agenda, we have the, actually fun thing to do, approve the name to be added to the Village Green honor roll in the, in the person of Stanton Dearborn.
So another element of this, which I did not get in the packet in time, but it's very important, it's on your desks, and it's a formal email from the Legion recommending Mr. Dearborn's name to be included.
And just for the record, it says, "Good morning, Audra, on behalf of the War Memorial Post 30. I am letting you know that the post is in agreement that Mr. Dearborn's name should in fact be added to the War Memorial at the Village Green. Any further questions, please let me know. Thank you, Jeff Sukaford." So that's for the record.
I'll make a motion that we agreed to add Stanton E. Dearborn's name to the War Memorial.
Second.
Second.
It's, so it should be Stanton E. Dearborn. I don't know if that needs to be in.
I'm not sure. Hope to get the, get the name right, I agree.
That's, that's the name on the application.
Yeah, that's the one that's been desired on the. Prepared. Stanton E. Dearborn.
Okay, motion and second, discussion? All's in favor? Five, zero, great.
And, so this is really wonderful, because it's, his sister's been working for so long to try to.
Just don't even work it on for like ever?
Yeah, for, yeah. And it's very nice coming together, and especially to have, you know, that we're not actually using the appeals committee.
Yeah.
It's like years in the making.
Yeah, and now we have a process that works a bit, and created an online form that you can actually apply, you know, fill out the application online. And Owen is gonna, is, is prepared to be able to do the engraving on the, on the wall before Veterans Day, so it will be up for Veterans Day, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Really excited about that. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Owen. And the Legion.
It just feels good to have this procedure in place and actually get a chance to use it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Onward and upward, or sideways at least, the seventh item, just a gist.
That was good.
We're on to the seventh item, which is the discussion on Camden Fire Department becoming a licensed first responder agency.
Interesting, it says number six here, but that's okay.
It does?
Yes.
How'd I get seven?
I want to have the public packet, but I have seven.
Anyway, who's leading the discussion, Chris, you gonna lead, or Audra, or all the above?
I'll do it.
Okay.
All of you. I think we should first define what we're talking about in terms of emergency first response, so we're talking about educating our firefighters, full-time, part-time, on-call firefighters, to provide emergency medical services, whether it be out of accident, fire, or to assist our ambulance provider, Northeast Mobile Health.
Yep.
Is that?
Go ahead, Chris.
So.
Chief, I have to say chief.
I think it was important to have this conversation at, at this level, because several years ago, the fire department was asked to expand their role and provide code enforcement, building inspection, and things like that. Relatively minimal impact on the fire department, certainly a small impact financially, asking the fire department to provide emergency medical services is going to have a much more significant impact, both on personnel and the budget. So I, I think it's important for you all to discuss that.
Absolutely.
Kind of how did we get here? Camden First Aid used to have first responders within the community. It was something that we talked about with Northeast back when, when they started being our ambulance service provider, something that didn't really gain traction over time. I think more recently, that's, when we've been meeting with Northeast, that's something that the, it's come back on the table to do. And I think it's, you know, something that, that we need to talk about. It even came more to light when Chief White Talk let us know, over the course of the summer, that Camden Valley Community College had obtained a grant to provide the EMT basic class training locally here at Midco School of Technology. So it's a, no cost for the tuition, it's a minimal.
Is that EMT level only, or?
Yes, entry-level EMT basic program, yes.
That's great.
How do you, I assume it's too early to ask you to start talking about how much, how much of an increase you envision? I assume that increase in call, in call volume is directly related to what your increase in personnel cost is going to be.
Right.
Is it too early to ask you to expand upon how, what ballpark you think we're looking at?
It is. I think we need to, Joe Conley from Northeast is here, he and I have talked about how we kind of want to work that, if it's a matter of fire department personnel responding to every ambulance service request, if it's a particular level, severity level, and if we put in a policy to do that, and then how we want to do it from there. So we kind of need to work with Joe in terms of getting those numbers to find out what it is in order to put a, put a, a financial figure to that.
Sure.
I thought you had a recommendation in the write-up that you have, that sort of laid out which calls you thought you might get called for first, and I thought it was a pretty good recommendation.
The various levels.
Yeah, so I thought that was a good start. Just from my viewpoint, I think it's very important, I think, I've said this before in different meetings, the number one thing I think a citizen of any town needs and looks forward to is when they need to call 911, they're expecting a prompt, well-trained person to show up to help them for whatever, whatever they need. And I think that's, it's worth the extra money to put into it, to have that guarantee for our citizens.
I guess, just to provide a little background, in case, you know, this isn't clear, we would be a non-transporting first responder agency.
Understood.
And Northeast would still be attending to calls and transporting patients.
Understood. Joe, we have you here, would you like to say something while you're, come on, and introduce yourself, please?
Joe Conley, Northeast Mobile Health Services.
Thanks, sure.
Of operations, what, it just.
To the mic, please.
Just to reiterate what everybody said, it's a first responder service, they're almost doing this right now with the fire department, showing up on scenes to help, manpower. What this would do is just make them medically trained, so they become that much more of an asset and much more valuable to the town and to the people that are calling 911.
Right. And Audra, just to, just to the financial comment, as I understand it, this is the, or you guys, our people would be going to the courses for EMT basic to start, if that's where they're, that level, and they'd be, they could be spending so many hours at this training, but the costs to the town are rather marginal. Is that my, is that correct?
Yeah, and I mean, and that, it particularly depends upon the policy that we agreed to with Northeast for what type of calls and under what circumstances.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
They respond.
It's a different kind of licensing. I also serve on the main EMS board, so what we have is you have different licensing levels. You can be an EMR, which is the basic first responder, all the way up to paramedic and still be a non-transporting service. So there's different ranges in here that we can educate to. The best one, and the most cost-effective one right now is this free basic class that's going on. So it's, it's a free class. So to do a basic, what we were looking at originally before that class came out was just doing an EMR, which is the basic level first responder. Here we are, Band-Aids, we can't go in an ambulance, we can help, but being at the basic level is, that, that class is much more.
I see, I see.
One other thing that I noticed in, excuse me, in the write-up, is that you would change the vehicle use of our fire department. We would, we would eliminate some of the vehicles we're not using much anymore, and have outgrown their usefulness, and get a new vehicle that could be, both carry the responders, but also be very, more useful than some of the other vehicles in responding to certain fire situations.
Where do you see that?
I think it's fair to say that the fire service is changing, and that's, you know, a lot of that is personnel-driven. We don't have 65 people on the roll anymore, like we had in 1995.
Can you just, sorry, can you just discuss kind of what you see the apparatus change being, if we do move forward in some version with this?
And, and I think.
I know it's in here, but I want to.
Leaving, reducing the apparatus would also save money. We would, we would get something new, more useful, but we'd save maintenance and, and space by.
Well, I, I was, I was under the impression, this is about training firefighters to become some kind of EMT level. The equipment side, first of all, we couldn't approve if we wanted to until next budget season, so if that's a requirement, we can address it at that point in time.
I mean, I, I think the equipment is secondary to, you know, it'd be having personnel trained and able to do it.
A future consideration. I get that, because there's always, I agree, there's always trade-offs we can play. Yeah, but I read that as a downstream thing, not in, right now, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're looking at exploring this, or trying to figure out a way to train our, you know, with the help of us in Northeast and the whole gang, to train our existing cadre of firefighters to some level, or EMT basic, EMR you called it, I think. And that, again, correct me if I'm wrong, just so the people understand, this is a very marginal cost, it's a lot of work for the firefighters, because they have to go through all this training, but they're, the cost to the town are just, what, just some labor costs?
I would say it's, it's insurance and personnel.
Okay.
Those are the two.
That's what I read into the.
That would be the near term.
Right. That's, that's, that's the initial, right.
And of course, you always have to ask, to you, chief, what is the, when we asked this when you did code enforcement, what's the interest level?
There is some interest there.
Good.
Yep.
I'm sure it's never.
A lot.
Well, I, it's never unanimous, life is what it is, but if it's, if there's, you know, even some, that's great, you know, that's, I think it's a great career path for people, you know, which we, what we talked about.
And frankly, that's sort of another impetus behind this, is that our region is very, like everywhere else in Maine, there just aren't enough.
Other country.
EMTs, paramedics, and.
Right.
This just gives people more of an option.
Yeah.
For a career path.
Allison?
Can, what's the, EMTB is the same thing as EMR? No. Can you say that again in a different way, so that maybe I retain it?
The EMR is the lowest level entry you get, it's about an 80-hour class, they're about, give or take.
Okay.
And what it does, teaches them advanced first aid, CPR, all that.
Can you give me an example of advanced first aid, like, so I can, what type of thing? Broken leg on the side of a mountain?
Like, somebody going into shock, it treats, it, it, it's the whole, it's a whole gamut of first aid.
Okay.
So it's more than just handing somebody a Band-Aid and going, here you go, put a Band-Aid on, it's advanced first aid.
Okay.
You know, we're going to learn how to splint, they're going to learn how to splint, they're going to learn how to put oxygen on.
That's the 80 hours of.
That's the 80-hour one, and as you progress up to the EMT, intermediate, paramedic, there's a whole bunch of levels.
Sure.
So the, the training changes as you go up. But for the non-transporting service, it can be basic at the EMR level, they get there first, before the ambulance arrives, start rendering care, ambulance then shows up with either a paramedic, intermediate, basic, whatever license level, takes over the care, first responder goes away, or can ride with the paramedic or EMT to the hospital.
I see.
If they need an extra set of hands. They just can't be alone in the back of an ambulance.
Right, understood.
Basic EMT can be alone in the back of an ambulance.
Okay.
See, I see.
That's where I was going with this.
Oh, I see.
EMR is not with a basic EMT.
Right.
It's a much more valuable license level for.
So what are we doing?
It is, but it's also a lot more time constraint.
More time.
The problem, and that was, and that's why we were looking at EMR first, when we first started talking about this before the EMT class, was it got a taste, if somebody didn't, wasn't sure if they really wanted to do this, why waste 200 hours in a class they're not going to do?
Yeah.
Versus an 80-hour class where they didn't have so much time committed.
Our firefighters will be getting the 200-hour.
No.
80-hour class.
Yes, no, the 200.
Oh, yeah?
100-hour class if they enroll in the free class.
Which is, I think.
I see, I see, okay. I misunderstood that, too.
One question, Chris, how many people are, talk about the staffing, you have four full-time people, will they all be going, and then how many on-call people will be, you think will take the class?
Currently have four people who are interested, four of the part-time on-call folks who are interested in taking the class.
Are there any existing that already have classification?
Yes.
How many?
There are a few.
You got a couple? Okay.
What kind of classification do they have? The 80 hours or the 200?
Some of them.
Or something higher?
Some of them have more than that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
There's an intermediate.
That's what I thought, intermediate, and one is paramedic.
But the majority of firefighters that respond don't have any?
Correct.
All right.
Not even?
Basic, very basic.
A CPR card.
Is it?
Kind of CPR training that I would have gotten in high school, for that, like, quick little thing where you're not really sure if you can do it or not? Just, I'm trying to.
Allison, they have oxygen masks, though.
If I could, if I could, the difference here is it's a license level through the main EMS board. The state of Maine issues you a license to be able to respond, so EMR is a little basic.
Okay, but the majority of them currently don't have any such thing?
That's not accurate.
No.
They have first, basic first aid CPR training.
Yep.
With, okay, with the certification from the state? No.
That's just.
We're, we're back to my high school experience where you're.
Wait a second.
I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm seeing, I'm looking at the.
They have CPR instruction from a licensed instructor.
Right.
Every firefighter currently?
Most of them do. Yes.
Most of them.
Mm-hmm.
That's not, that's not the.
From a licensed instructor, all medical training, so if they, yeah, if they show up there. It does not, I mean, it does actually, because I, I do believe that there is a feeling, at least, I think a lot of residents are around, have the same level of being uninformed that I do, honestly. I, I think that's true, that a lot of them believe, as I did, that the average firefighter has a higher level of medical training than they actually do.
I think that's an accurate statement, and I.
It's not an attack in any way, it's just a.
We can verify that based on the fact that over the last couple of years, two people have stopped out front, hoping that somebody's going to help them deliver a baby that was being.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, it seems.
We call it Northeast, because we don't have that capability.
Right, right.
Right.
There's lots of confusion, but to this, to this, to this initiative, like I call it that, can you describe, because I agree, I don't pretend to be expert here either, but this, this, is this kind of an approach to a more efficient triage of a situation?
Well, I, I mean, I know, I, I get what Allison's saying, but I think we're chasing a whole lot of rabbits down a hole here.
I agree.
I'm going to approve it, I'm just trying to educate the public a little bit, I'm not.
No, I'm just saying, we're.
Chief, I'm trying to talk to this initiative to train our firefighters to the EMR level or whatever, but, but, yeah, EMTB, okay, again, to that level, they do that, but this is all about getting more first responder triage ability to go to, to get to, to get to an incident and say, yeah, you need a Band-Aid, no, we need, we need lifeflight.
I, I mean, I think another way of saying it that kind of answers Allison's question is that when firefighters, after this training, when firefighters show up on scene, they're able to do more of that sort of, you know, medical intervention than what they're currently able to do. So we're, we're able to get a little closer to that expectation that they're going to receive some sort of care and treatment.
If somebody pulls up in front, in front of the door, we can, we can do more than they currently think we can.
Mark, I think some of the misconception is television. People watch television and see people.
It's true.
Trained, and, you know.
It's so true.
Uniforms.
Is that what it is?
That's possible, too.
I was actually going to say, I feel like television is more accurate, like, waiting for the paramedics to show up.
Well.
So we're in a tie. Switch, always.
But there will be situations where the.
O-tie.
Where a firefighter now would be at a scene before, an ambulance would be there, and be able to call off an ambulance, or call in lifeflight, or so, whatever, it's triage, I call it.
Or tell him he needs to have a higher license coming, than what he, than he currently has.
I've called the ambulance before, when I really, an ambulance didn't need to come.
When, when a fire, when, right now, when a fire department shows up on scene, they can't render any medical care to put.
Right, right.
Even move somebody.
Legally, legally, they cannot render any care to that, on that call.
Understood, understood.
Now, becoming a first responder service, they are now allowed to render care, so the firefighters, even if, even if the chief has two paramedics on a fire truck and a call comes in, by law, they cannot render care.
Got it.
As a first responder service, and permitted correctly and trained, EMT level, whatever level, they can render care while the, while the ambulance is in room, instead of waiting.
That's what I thought, I call that triage.
That's a.
Audra, do you need any, there's no action required by the board right now, is there?
I think it's, it's more of, we just want to find out if this is a direction everybody's comfortable going in.
Yep.
Why would we not want this?
Right, because we're not.
No, no, don't get trained, no more training.
No, right, no, I.
No reason to oppose it, right?
Well, there is a, the only, I think Greg bring it up, and I don't think anybody's disagreeing with it, but there is, there's some costs involved, and we should expose that, and that's fine.
Insurance.
That's fine, yeah, it may be, but it may be marginal cost at this point in time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only reason for having this.
There's, there's one other side to it, I would say, there's nothing worse than responding and being the first person there from the fire department, and not being able to render aid.
Legal.
That's got to be, because you can't do it, that's a horrible thing. You want to be able to help people if they need the help. You can't, you don't want to sit there and go, sorry, can't help you, we have to wait for the ambulance.
I think it goes without saying that across the nation, including on the national news last night, another location, not on the East Coast, but they had this first responder thing, and the best, whoever's there first, the best trained, more trained they have, the better off everybody is, to determine, I call it triage, whether the person needs a Band-Aid or lifeflight, or something in between that I, we can legally treat. Every place is going with this, in this direction, that I'm aware of, but I'm not as expert as you guys, so.
It's, it's the right thing to do with a shortage of personnel that's out there right now and everybody running for staff. This is just using, utilizing resources that are there for a minimal cost, getting them trained and getting the equipment out.
I, I think as a preponderance of support, obviously.
I think so.
But I would also, you, Audra, if you see, for any reason we haven't foreseen costs going up, we need to bring it to the table, so we can anticipate that. If no other reason, then we can manage it, but two, we can consider it in next year's budget.
Absolutely, and also part of this is just having that public discussion, so everyone's aware of the fact that we're moving in this direction.
Agreed. Thank you, gentlemen, great, look forward to it.
Thank you both very much and all of you who are here too.
Yeah, thanks for coming up, Joe.
Thank you.
Onto our discussion or approval of an interlocal agreement for legal services. Why do we need legal services? Oh, sorry, Bill. Rodra, do you want to lead into it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start this. So, you know, we've had discussions with our attorney about the potential of, you know, changing the way that Bill delivers legal services, so it's a little bit more, you know, fixed in terms of the hours that we can expect Bill here, Bill to be here during the week, as well as having a more sort of stable predictable cost on a year-to-year basis. So currently, the way that budgeting for legal services works is that I just do my best based on the history to come up with an estimate of, you know, what the, what the budget's going to be. I, I'll look at, you know, are there any issues in the upcoming year that impact this, but really, it's just my best guess.
Sure.
Which is, you know, that's how budgets go, they're construct, they're best guess at whatever point in time you're at. But there has been some, you know, ebb and flow years where, you know, the town has used Bill's services more than others and, you know, there can be cases where, you know, an unforeseen issue can cause the legal budget to really spike. So from, you know, my perspective as the person who's responsible for managing the budget, there's a lot of appeal in having a very kind of stable predictable year-to-year cost associated with, you know, Bill and the services he's providing to the town. And, you know, another thing that we talked about is that, you know, there's, there's really sort of, given that we're paying an hourly rate, we're getting Bill involved in projects sometimes where he could have had more value a little further, or, you know, a little more towards the beginning of that particular project. So, you know, I think that that's kind of another benefit to this is that having more access to Bill on a more regular basis gives us the ability to access him at a point in time where we might be able to, you know, sort of exercise a ounce of prevention instead of looking at trying to solve an issue down the stream. So those are some of the thoughts around, you know, why we wanted to look at this. And the idea would be that, you know, Bill's two main clients would be the town of Camden and the city of Belfast, so Bill would primarily be an employee of the town of Camden, but we would be reimbursed by the city of Belfast to 66.66% of all of the expenses associated with him.
One-third, two-thirds split.
Right, so we're one-third, Belfast would be two-thirds.
And what would that cost be? Oh, sorry.
So that would be about $1,000 a week.
Can.
Fifty-two thousand.
Yes.
For Camden.
Total?
For Camden.
For Camden, for Camden, right, I was going to say, no, nor is that cheap. But, okay, so that, Mark, you wanted to ask a question?
Allison had something first.
I'm sorry, Allison.
I mean, no, I think you were actually raising your hand and I just interrupted is what happened, but thank you for being so gracious, as you always are.
I just wanted to say, you know, I think it's an excellent idea because it guarantees us history and a wealth of knowledge that in a situation where all of us here on the board and our town manager are, don't have anywhere near the time spent on the town affairs that, that Bill has. Bill, how long have we been doing this here?
Me?
Yes.
Sixteen years.
Yeah, it gives us, it guarantees us that wealth of knowledge, which is important, gives us that history, and I think it's an incredibly good idea.
Allison, you didn't have your hand up, but you want to say something?
I, yes, I do, thank you. So I think Bill's great and I don't want to lose Bill and I don't think that we're in a situation where we have been told that it's either that we do this or we lose Bill. I think, just looking at what we currently budget for legal services, that's about $20,000 and I understand that sometimes it goes.
Twenty-six.
Let me zoom in on that, but either way.
Sure.
Fifty-two thousand is, is just so much higher than that and, and this is really, I don't believe that we actually have the authority to do this. I think it has to go through the budget process and that we can have the conversation then. Probably we do have the authority or Bill wouldn't be thinking it was okay to ask. I, I understand that, I guess one-year contracts we can do or whatever, but the point being,
You have to find the budget plan.
I think that it is, it is a budget item and it's a, going to be an increase of about, you know, twofold, so I think that we should wait and just let it go through the budget process, let the budget committee review it and.
Hey, Taylor?
I was thinking about the last comment, Allison made, because it makes sense to me. I, I agree, I think it'd be, the number of times that, you know, we reach out to Bill, I think it'd be helpful to have a little bit closer and a little more available, I think that there's a bigger benefit from that. I'm actually curious to hear what, Audra, you think about what Allison's suggesting in terms of the budget process. I mean, I think ideally, that's a better scenario to prove this under, so I just wonder what are the downsides that would prohibit us from doing that or waiting to do that, if there is any?
Well, I mean, I guess it's about, you know, the city of Belfast readiness, I know it's very different with them, they're, you know.
City council.
The council's their own legislative body, so it's, you know, they can make changes more quickly and.
But why don't they want to be the, the primary employer? It's, it's kind of odd that we would be the primary employer when we're the smaller portion of it, if they were so eager to move forward with it, you'd think they would have a mechanism for that and then we could just contract out while we're catching up.
Hello.
Hi.
So if I could just touch on a couple things, so, because I think there's some things that at least I can provide in terms of my perspective. I'm not here to negotiate because I don't do negotiations with any municipality that I work for. I have no contracts anywhere. I can be fired at any time and I, that's the way I function and would continue to function. The town's legal budget has at times been $120,000. I would have to go back a few years when we did a lot of cleanup with a lot of things. What seems to, I, I think that there's a, this actually is not a good financial move for me, this is a bit of a change in my model of what I'm suggesting.
Yep.
Most people would say what I'm proposing is a bit silly because for those folks at home, what I'm suggesting is changing my hourly rate from $180 an hour to $100 an hour. What this does do is give the town, basically, I'm looking at this as a five-year plan in terms of capacity for what I see up and down the coast as increasing development issues and pressures and just legal issues, and it's happening, it hits in different towns at different times, it's going to happen here. And it has in the past, which is why I mentioned in terms of what the budgets could be. When I started working here in 2003, my hourly rate was $115 an hour. It's 2020 almost and I'm suggesting $100 an hour. One of the reasons is because in terms of my own business model, I would be, in order to make this work for me, which sounds silly, is I am now, I would essentially move myself down to having one full-time employee and then take advantage of the health insurance that you have, so I don't have to bill you for that and then, because I, I sat down and looked at the way money was churning through my office and what do we have for value? And I, I view what I'm offering to the town here as, as sort of capacity for the next five years in terms of also getting ahead and being involved in issues that crop up where people look at me tonight and say, what do you think? Well, I don't know because I haven't had a chance to look at it before now. And that happens fairly routinely, which is just a function, I think, of awareness of the budget. And this is one of the lower ends in terms of budget that historically I've had with Camden in terms of what's in the cycle now, which is fine if that's what you want to do. But it, part of what's going on here is my own business model in terms of focusing more on Camden and Belfast and as a result of that, reducing my other client flow and availability, which means I will shed some clients, that's just the nature of the beast. Skipping back even further, one of the reasons I'm suggesting this is having read a study that came out by one of the law court superior, law court justices and several other attorneys about delivery of services, legal services. And what I'm suggesting in this model is actually fairly evolved in terms of what lawyers are doing, sort of more for less, in the sense of being here on site, getting ahead of issues and charging you less per hour. To do that, because I will have less overhead, because I will not have, in the same amount of time I would work with Belfast and Camden, in a given week, I wouldn't be touching maybe 15 or 20 other clients, which require other staff and requires other administrative time and requires downtime frankly. So that is the thought, the suggestion is starting December 1st, obviously that does not work if you go through the budget committee. Belfast did, stepping back even further, you might imagine that before I got here tonight, I did have conversations with both managers in Belfast and Camden, also talked to the planners, and hopefully, this is not the first time you've heard about this, and it seemed like it was ripe to bring it forward and if it's not, that's okay too. Belfast did approve it last night because this was sort of marked in terms of calendar to have either people in or people out at the same time. So that's what it's about. I view myself as a resource and I view myself as providing in this plan an opportunity for capacity as we move, as the town moves forward. I'm seeing that as a need and I'm trying to adjust my model and somewhat selfishly, it is, is going to be, I will have a less frenetic practice by doing some of this.
Yep.
That's why I'm discounting the rate by $80 an hour.
I guess to answer the Belfast question, so believe it or not, we've got more sort of experience with these interlocal agreements than the city of Belfast and I think we just have a higher, I think we just have a higher level of comfort with this sort of agreement because we do it with Randy and the, and the town of Rockport and Kerry.
We just don't have the authority to sign a five-year interlocal agreement that has to go to the. I'm all for it, I'd like, I think it makes all the sense in the world, but we don't have the authority in our charter to sign a five-year interlocal agreement, we can sign a one-year agreement.
That's a good point. Mark, finish.
The question I want to have is, is, Audra and Bill, is what Allison's saying correct or can we make some sort of deal?
Sorry, with, do you mean with the one-year versus five, like the long-term agreements?
Yeah. Could we, do we have the authority to do that tonight?
Well, I think that this is probably what Bill is going to suggest and what, what's proposed in this, is that this would be, you know, a one-year agreement and then the four other years would be contingent on approval through the budget process.
Yeah, I think.
Because the initial term shall be five years.
It does, and then, and there's, and there's no mention of that in this draft, as it is, I would agree, would have to be a five-year kind of thing, but after the first year, it would have to be an approval of the process because we do have a right, the legal right to sign a one-year agreement to some kind of service, as long as it fits within the existing budget.
Allison, we'd have to select for contingency.
Yes, of course, of course you can.
Okay, one concern, first of all, I think this is very appealing, I in fact said to Allison earlier, I always, I would have to sort of control myself because I'd be wanting to ask Bill all of the legal questions.
Right, that is, yeah.
And I, it concerns, one concern I have is, you know, Bill, as I understand it, would be set up at the, one of the desks in the Audra's office area, maybe with a partition of some sort, on the voter thing or something, but would you, how would we make sure that Bill isn't just being cannibalized by everybody who walks into the office? I'm, I'm sorry to say this, Josh, but by everybody who has a project that wants legal advice and from our lawyer and not theirs. How do we make sure that doesn't happen?
That's, that's an organizational thing, we charge on Audra to control.
We're building a wall.
We're building a wall.
Because Bill is just such a nice guy, you're such a nice guy, I just can't.
I think, I think that's controllable, but you had another question beyond that.
I think that's a reasonable answer.
It is, it is, we can hit on.
I just addressed that though.
Part of it is me because I know I would be like, hey, Bill.
I could easily waste some of Bill's time by just being chatty.
Nothing would change in terms of the way I function, everything goes through the town manager as it normally does.
Okay.
What, the only difference here, practically speaking, is, is actually Back to the Future with, this is a model I used with Roberta Smith for 10 years.
Yeah, oh, I know.
And what I did was, I came in Monday and I came in for about five or six hours on Mondays.
Right.
And there was an awareness and there's a schedule and department heads would come in and talk about projects they're working on or whatever, and we'd sort of work through the next steps and things that are a bit preventative, and that worked out really well for 10 years. So when you boil down what I'm suggesting here, the only difference literally is probably being here about half a day, because I'm going to need the other time for the rest of the week when other things hit, or going back after I've been here for the day and then addressing those other issues at my office when I can research them and write and all that.
Right.
So practically speaking, nothing changes except being here on a predictable basis about five hours or six hours a week. We haven't talked about it in detail, but I think that's how it would function.
Sure.
So that's, I wouldn't, I don't think that creates a tremendous opportunity for too much interference and it's always back to Audra to authorize.
And so I, I do share the concern about the fact that this, despite the fact that we have a legal budget, that we are not a city council and this feels like we're creating a position, which doesn't seem like something that we have the authority to do and that concerns me, just that we would be steamrolling the process. I'm wondering whether it would be possible to, either possible and legal, to look at this as some kind of interim agreement pending, you know, budgetary approval for the four years as I think someone suggested previously.
Sure.
Or to hold off, and I know that we're waiting on Belfast and, you know, all of these pieces fit together, but to hold Belfast off and say, we're all interested in this, but we need to go through our budget process, we're a town manager full of government.
Okay, well, I think it's, well, did everybody have a chat? I think they did.
Just like to hear that.
Sorry? Okay, okay, well, Audra, do you want to respond to the, to the gap, us being able, we, we do budgetary shifting all the time, when necessary, probably have a couple more coming up that I foresee with some construction things where we have to use some budget elsewhere to pick, to fill the gap.
Of course, I've, I've got.
For one year.
Suggestions I can make on how you would do this and where it would come from and it would be your discretion as to whether or not you want to do that.
Okay.
So, but it is possible.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the key because we do, we do this all the time, where we have a, a contract comes in, it's over budget, we have to find the monies to do whatever, we, we do utilize other budgets to, but to the, to the, I would agree, well, first of all, just in general terms, we, we live in a world today where the, the need for professional services is growing all the time. You, we, I believe Camden has been short and it's, and I've seen it a number of times where we could have used legal services but didn't, for expediency, didn't reach out. We have an economic, and, and we have a planning and economic development department, which many towns don't have. That takes, in the amount of ordinance activity we are involved in and all the things I see, in my opinion, could use a little bit more reinforcement legally. This is just a trend in the plan today, I get the cost thing and I agree, we got to be careful, however, I think we have an opportunity here to try something for short term, can't be for five years, I agree, I don't think we have the ability to do that, to modify this agreement to a one-year trial and then, it doesn't go any further unless we get budgetary approval for the future, to go with the next annual budget cycle. That's because I think if we can find the, the funds to fund this delta of 20 something thousand dollars, it's, it's, it's worth, it's worth its weight in gold, in my opinion, but, Mark?
Couple of questions. Number one, I don't think it's, we're not just looking at Belfast being comfortable with what we're doing, it's also, this is more Bill's life that we're dealing with, it's not just Belfast, it's what, what he's looking for changes in his life, and I want to make sure we don't lose the opportunity by being creative in how we do it. Number two, Bill, are you comfortable with doing it for a year until, until we can go through the budget process?
Well, we could go through various practices in a few months here, but.
Well, I, that's what I'm saying.
It wouldn't take effect till July 1st first.
Sure.
Sure.
Yes.
We work on a handshake for 16 years, I'm not really worried.
Exactly, exactly.
The reason it said five years was a plan in terms of.
I get it.
Both towns knowing, because you'll note that I'm not signing anything. I'm not signing.
It's just the two town managers.
I'm not signing a contract.
He's a lawyer.
I didn't think you were that kind of lawyer, Bill.
He's a lawyer.
No, but so that if you decide, if Allison decides that I'm going to be fired at any time.
That would be it.
I mean, if someone's likely.
Maintains, this is an agreement so that there's a mechanism for the employment.
That's right.
That's right.
It's a compensation vehicle for me.
That's right.
It's not changing anything the way I function, my practice will still function.
Second, Taylor?
I'm just curious, I'm wholly supportive of this, I think it's, there's a lot of benefit to it. I'd just like to make sure that we.
Changing my mind.
Properly, so I'm curious if we fund it through the end of June.
Excuse me.
The budget somewhere and also at the same time go through the budget process, so post-June 30th.
Yep.
Right.
That kicks in.
New fiscal year.
Yeah, that's.
This budget process and we simply fund it through the end of this fiscal year.
That's correct, that's correct, that's, we're calling, we're calling a one-year agreement, it's not really a one-year agreement, it's until June 30th, July 1st of 2020.
It's for the rest, the remainder of the fiscal year.
It's for the rest of this fiscal year, yes, I'm talking fiscal year, so be, good point, to be clear. I just don't, don't see why that can't occur, if, but we got to get it in the budget, we can't, you're right, we can, we cannot go spending, you know, money that we don't have in, in the existing budget. And I, hearing Audra, we do, so if we do, then we would just modify this to agree to five years, fine, but, but only until July 1st, 2020, and after that, we reserve the right with, with Belfast to terminate if through the budget process for 2021, is it 21, 20? 21, 21, that we wouldn't continue. That's, that's, that, I think that covers all of the legal basis because we do not have the right to sign a five-year agreement.
How are you suggesting that we fund it for the remainder of this year?
So, any difference between what we budgeted for legal expenses and what
26,000, right?
Yes, the 26,000.
22, if we really
It's 22?
Want to get into
The 22?
Sorry.
I mean, there are several different places where, so general legal, and then there's codes and planning legal, which is, general legal is 22, codes and planning legal is 8.
So it's 32.
Which part of that is employment legal, when we have
That's, there's like a personnel legal line as well.
There is?
Yeah.
Should be. There's not pretty much, though.
There used to be a ZBA legal, too, but we
No, so it's, so it's 22, 8 plus, I don't remember what person
Well, no, he doesn't do the personnel part, right?
Yes, yes, he does.
I swear there's some other
No, no, Bill does personnel.
He's eating Peabody, yeah.
That's midco solid waste.
Yeah.
They don't do anything for us?
No.
Do you want to hire him?
I mean, we have
No, I'm, no, I don't.
We have bond counsel, bond counsel is the only outside.
I knew there was something, okay.
Personnel is 4?
Oh, I'd have to have the budget up in front.
I forget.
Okay, so it's not quite as bad as I was thinking in terms of the jump.
Not quite, no, it's actually, my limited mathematical capability is 18, 18.
Yeah, it's, it's an $18,000 difference between, if you add up all the different legal now.
It's $1,500 a month.
Yeah, difference. I personally would rather just get it done tonight.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And, and, and go through the budget process moving forward.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
What did you say you wanted to do up front? We wanted to pick contingency and
You've got a lot of select board contingency, because I've kept just carrying it forward.
We haven't used it.
And you haven't used a lot of it.
It's over, it's 100,000.
We've talked about using it, but then, like, insurance payouts have
We didn't
Covered costs of certain things that we've set aside contingency.
We need to hire somebody that can help us plan for climate change, we need to hire somebody to do water quality testing, we need to, there are a lot of, you know, it's easy to say, well, it's a great opportunity with legal stuff, but there are lots of things that need additional staff time, and so I do worry that this is such an easy decision for everyone, but when we're, you know, planning for the future of the world and reducing our emissions, somehow there's not a lot of money.
I, I was gonna say, is, if we're gonna move forward, do we need a motion? Because I'd like to, I'd like to
Yes.
I think we've pretty much gone through all the issues.
We have to vote on exactly where it's going to come from, so is that all from contingency?
I would recommend that it comes from
I would recommend that it be the
Select board contingency.
Yeah, yeah.
Balance in the contingency right now.
I think it's over 100,000 dollars.
Okay.
Normally, year to year was like 60, but there was some carry forward.
Yeah, that's
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to go ahead with this agreement for, to continue for the rest of this budget season, using select board contingency for the additional funds that are necessary.
Yeah, and remember, the, just, I should qualify before, because if we're only doing it, this is what, November, let's say it's November 1st, it's December 1st it starts, right, this thing?
That's the plan.
So we're talking seven months, so seven months times the $1,500 difference is much less than you think, it's like 10 grand.
What's the year to date on, I, I just, I feel like this is, it's turning into this thing that I'm against this or something, and you're surprised that, and it's not, when, when I thought this was going to be on the agenda, it was to have a discussion, and then we said, saw it on the agenda, and it said approval of, and it's this whole thing. So I'm not trying to, and to say that I'm
Sure.
Against this, but I did have a lot more questions that now it feels like it was written on the agenda as if we're supposed to approve something, and now this is, so it's still not totally clear to me how you can be an at-will employee when we have an agreement with, or, not an at-will, but how can we, when you're just contracted right now, and we could say, you know what, this isn't working out, and I'm, I'm just saying hypothetically, I, I really like you, Bill, and I think you're the very best choice, it's not, really, truly not about that, but the change in, how could we go with a different attorney when we have an agreement with Belfast for you to be our full-time employee, and how could we say we're going to change in the middle of that? I don't understand.
We're being recorded, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so if anytime the select board says, three people raise their hands that they don't want me here anymore, then that's it, I'm done.
That's correct.
And how would Belfast, what would Belfast do?
Well, Belfast, obviously, the inter-local agreement would fail, because I would no longer be an employee.
That's correct.
And you'd have to negotiate with Belfast.
They'd just have to figure it out.
Sort of, with Belfast.
Okay.
I've been there for 30 years, they, they were quite pleased with the whole thing, and I don't think we'll have too much issue, whatever I have to do there, it'll work out.
Remember, for the seven months we're talking about, the downside is very, very limited, right, from almost every perspective. It's only seven months, and we haven't spent, we haven't spent the
And we're working that out, but the thing that was in our pocket is a five-year agreement, and so I, it's, this is not an attack on Bill, I feel these are reasonable questions.
Nobody's saying, why, don't be defensive, you don't, you don't
I feel like Bill thinks I'm like
I don't feel that from you, I honestly don't.
I'm not as worried about the way you feel as the way you feel.
But anyway, I think, I think
I think the seven months is a good compromise, I mean, I was
It's different, it's just, that's all there is.
I had concerns coming, but if we can move forward that way, I'm more, much more comfortable than I would
Realistically, we're talking about the worst scenario, another $10,000, because, remember, the budget we have right now, which is 34,000 from all the buckets, is not been expended, that hasn't been expended yet. So we have, we have money left in there, it might cover the rest of the year.
I think, I think the concern is just the process.
Yeah, exactly.
And if we make this, if we make the, do the process as, as formally laid out, then we can officially put it into the budget process and do the next four years coming.
I think you should, I think it's essential.
Get it through town meeting and all that, jazz.
Your motion to whatever you want to say, I forgot already.
The motion stands, I, I think we should make the agreement for the rest of this budget year, using select board contingency funds for the additional funds that need to be used. And
Okay.
Second.
Second from Jenna? More, more discussion? Halls in favor? 5-0, thank you, thank you, now, now you're fired.
Did not.
Did we talk to you about the, the maintenance lawns and stuff that's a part of the deal?
There's a brick falling out.
Anyway, onward and upward.
There's a brick falling out. Just continue on solving that issue.
Just kidding, nothing.
We have a, a next item on the agenda.
I haven't seen a, in the past few weeks.
There's not a brick recently at all.
All right, ladies.
Say thank you, I think, but thank you.
Thank you, I think, yeah, ditto.
Look what you just signed up for.
Thanks for all you do, we all, all five of us do appreciate.
Thank you, Bill.
Next we have on the agenda is the approval of the recommended change by the Army Corps on the deauthorization request for our portion of the Camden Harbor. Jeremy, you want to explain the fun part of this thing?
I have a break.
You want a break?
Don't listen to me, I'll just take a break by myself in my, in my, in my head.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Meditate.
Jeremy, please proceed.
I think that was a good, just frankly, that was a good move. I have been trying to limit my time with Bill.
Thank you.
And it's hard, and I think Bob made a good comment on the, the planning and economic development issues that we face, and just the, the way the world is today, it is very complicated, and it's really hard for me to get Bill involved at the end of a project because of our budget and the way we, we operate, and so this is a, a good plan moving forward in my perspective, so, thank you. And now maybe get to where I was going. So, deauthorization.
Speaking of legal issues, um
Sorry. Sorry, there's a segue.
Hey, segue, I like segues.
This wasn't really a vote, this was really more of an update on what, what's transpired.
Right.
And Allison, maybe since you had, drive the train sometimes here
Is that drawing up Allison?
On the screen, and that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I'm just, I can understand Jeremy perfectly fine what he was asking.
I'm not sure.
All right, there we go.
How zoomed in would you like it?
Just to get up and see that little pie-shaped piece that is gray.
82 percent, please.
Yeah, right there.
82.3?
No, it actually has to be, we're already at 75.
I know.
There.
I could see.
So just some background on this, as you know, we, we're first looking at a 5.14 acre for deauthorization, and we talked about a, this at the last meeting.
Jeremy, want a pointer?
Sure.
Well, then the people at home, I'll try to, I'll try to follow along with your pointer so that people at home can see it, too.
So, and maybe, Allison, can you zoom out a little bit more to maybe try to get the harbor in, the wider?
Thank you, yeah, that's what I was doing before.
Super. So how this process works is, you know, the Army Corps has to review this proposal to deauthorize, and we were working with the, with the Army Corps, I was, on this, and back and forth with them, to make sure they were okay with what was being, what was being requested to be deauthorized. And Where's my pointer?
I'm trying to find your pointer.
It's not, there's a button, you don't, not in your eyeball.
Yeah, but
It's not working.
It's too bright up there, so, if you can see the outer edge, the dotted line closest to, that'd be the east, right? Yes.
Jeremy, it's, it's not working.
And no one really knew where that deauthorization
Here.
Area, yes, no, Bob, me, nope, all the way over, yep, come down and just follow that line.
I'm trying to move.
Correct, that line, no one really knew where, where the ends of, end of the deauthorization area, or the authors, federal navigation project area was, and no one did, every, because on every map that we had, or plan that we had from the Army Corps dating back to 1890 something, that line connecting from the top down, where Bob just was, did not show up on any plan.
Okay.
Okay, so everyone assumed that this navigation project area just continued out.
This way.
Yes. And the Army Corps actually came back and said, oh, no, it ends, and we said, where, I said, where does it end? And they said, it ends, you got to connect that line. Well, why didn't they connect the line? I don't know, but they didn't. So, but that's where the navigation project area ends. And so in essence, when they were reviewing the plan, they said, what, what you're proposing is fine with us, however, what you're actually doing is leaving a fragmented piece of the navigation area standalone by itself, this little triangle, this little pie-shaped piece. And the Army Corps says, we don't want that, so please revise your, your plan to Congress under the Worda to include that area, so we're not having to manage or maintain this fragmented portion of the navigation area. So they recommended this to us, to me, and said, can you draw that? So that is included in the, the area that's being requested to be deauthorized. There are other two comments, in working with the Army Corps, after you guys had approved this request, was to, they wanted to make sure there was a plan to address any moorings that would be impacted by this area, and they wanted to make sure that we would continue always to make sure that the channel, which is, you see the channel? Yep, that area is, continues to be maintained as a channel. And I reached out to Steve Pixley, and he says, oh, yes, that is forever going to be the channel in and out of Camden Harbor, and we are not going to put moorings in that area, there will be nothing in that area. And he has a plan to relocate about 20 moorings that are impacted, in potentially impacted, should their project move forward, or are a potential project for us at Steamboat Landing move forward. And of those 20, I believe six of those moorings are Lyman and Morse's, and Josh, is that correct?
Four.
Four of those 20 are Lyman and Morse's moorings, so we'll be actually having to relocate 16 moorings from that potential area, and that's what this is, is simply a request after the Army Corps got back to me and said, we don't want that fragmented area up top.
Are the 16 moorings just in the fragmented area, or is that the whole project?
Those 16 moorings would be moorings that would be potentially impact should Lyman Morse's project move forward.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And it said there was a plan, and that was included, I didn't, I didn't see any, I just read, like, general, there's some space over here, and there's some space over here.
And that's what, that's what Steve gave me, and that's what he had, and I asked him for try to put a better plan together, and he said he would work on that, but he has a plan to relocate those 18 moorings.
But this and
Those are Army Corps' concerns about our plan to deauthorize this area, where, again, those, those moorings, that are there.
Are you sending them that plan?
They were content with my response back to him, which is why I included in your memo that we're going to include, I think, 10, what did he say? 10 adequate space just northeast before you get to into Sherman's Cove for approximately 10 moorings, new moorings, and there's enough space in the south mooring field just across the channel for the other 10 that will be displaced. And actually, I don't believe Lyman and Morse, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't believe Lyman and Morse will maybe not need those moorings anymore, maybe you will, but, but they may not need them if their project moves forward.
And that's, that's another thing, but, I mean, people are going to be really upset about, about
The moorings.
Moving their moorings. That's just a fact, I'm not saying it's a reason not to do the project in any way, it's just, it's a, one of the major obstacles for the project, and we should be clear
Understood, and that was, that's a concern of the Army Corps, and they want to make sure that those, those moorings are addressed.
Oh, the, that sounds like the plan right now is to just move them a lot farther away from
Yeah.
It's going to be less convenient.
I have to talk to Steve Pixley about
I mean, it's not going to be like, the people aren't going to say, oh, I'm fine with my mooring moved over here, it's, it's not going to be
There, I understand.
And so I don't want anything that we do tonight to imply that we are also
There, you are not
Endorsing a mooring relocation plan.
You're not endorsing any specific mooring relocation plan, correct.
Allison, if I understand correctly, we have the ability to negotiate with Lyman if we're going to go ahead with the, the deal, and part of that may have to be about, you know, some of those moorings, maybe we don't have
I think that's a valid point.
We can negotiate that.
No, but I think
It's going to be directly in the way, I mean, there's just going to have to be
I think Allison's comment is correct, I think that we are not approving any relocation of moorings, we just understand it's a concern going forward, and it will be addressed with any project that may occur in this area, we have to address it in the future.
The, I will say, the Army Corps moved, Army Corps moves at a snail's pace.
Oh, yeah.
They really do, and they moved very quickly, had a lot of people looking at this, and they don't look at things lightly when it comes to navigation, I will say, and, and they got on it and provided comments back to us because they know the time crunch with, with Congress, and
That's, my question is, we were told the deadline was November 1st.
Yes.
They've moved on this quick, today's November 6th.
Yep.
If we okay this tonight, which I hope we do, are we still in time for, have you talked to senators' offices to make sure that we're okay there?
Yes, I actually just got an email from Chris Rector, from Angus King's office, to make sure that they had everything that they needed, and that this was still moving along, and he confirmed that they were moving along, and it's in their, in path to, to be included in the Worda 2020. Obviously, there's a big process, and he acknowledged that, there's a long process that's out in front of this Worda 2020 still.
Do you need anything from us, Jeremy?
I don't know about formally, but, I mean, I think it's good probably to endorse this change, I mean, it is, the Army Corps was going to come down and recommend it anyway, and likely would have said
Yep.
We're going to okay this if they include that area in it.
When you say the Army Corps is going to recommend it anyway, what do you mean by that?
Recommend that they, that we include this pie-shaped piece in this, in this area.
Right.
I make a motion that we approve or recommend to the Army Corps that we will allow that pie-shaped portion to be included as part of our request.
Did the harbor committee have, a second for discussion?
Thank you.
Did the harbor committee look at this at all or...
It was on their agenda today and actually they did not even talk about it today.
They were like, don't bother us with that.
Well, no, no, there's, you know, there is, there is, there is existing concern that this was, you know, clearing the way for a project, quote unquote. I've heard that of a couple, two people. And we've had this discussion during the select board meeting, what, two weeks ago? There's many, many factors that have to be, Allison, you mentioned one with the moorings. We're not approving any project. We're not approving any, you know, there's, there's a number of different things. The advantage to this outweigh the disadvantages. That's the bottom line that we came up with in doing this application to Worda, if that's the right application. And yeah, just someone's say, wait two years or four years. We didn't. We approved it and we're moving forward with the de-federalization. Now, this is a tweak to that. Nothing has changed. There still is many, many obstacles to the future about anything that happens at the harbor, which will definitely go through a public process because it has to.
I would say that the Army Corps...
I'm not asking if the harbor, if the harbor committee talked about it at all. It's not an information I need to vote. It's just, I'm curious.
I don't believe they did.
They did not. I think they got hung up on a lot of other agenda items today.
Anybody actually there?
I believe Josh was there today as a member of the harbor committee.
They discussed it, but I don't think, neither I nor Taylor could make it today as liaison so that probably wasn't hellishly effective. Sorry?
It was not discussed at all.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Not at all.
That's what I saw.
I would say that the Army Corps, from their perspective, they look at this, they said, can you guys make a field adjustment on this? And that's from my perspective. It's a de minimis field adjustment to address the Army Corps' concerns.
That's another part that concerns me, that triangle. It's not like that's my favorite part of the navigation project or something and I was just only needed it to just be that and that was okay. It's the part about the plan, the mooring relocation plan and our tendency not wanting to get any further down the road of being overly optimistic and wanting to have good quality information. Just, I talked to the, Steve's a really optimistic person and that's part of what makes him good at his job. But just, the harbor master says, we have a plan to move some moorings around. Yeah. It might be good enough for the Army Corps, but it concerns me that that's our response to the Army Corps.
I agree wholeheartedly.
It is the harbor master's job to locate moorings in the harbor.
I think the, I think that the harbor committee has some role in that too.
They do not, and the day in and day out locating moorings out in the harbor is the harbor master's job.
Well, it makes me even more concerned then because apparently we aren't going to even have a say. Nobody's going to have a say. It's just Steve that can say, your mooring moves here without having to do anything? I thought people have a mooring location that they...
Nope.
So Steve tomorrow could say, this mooring, all these six are going to, we're just going to have them picked up and relocated over there.
Do that regularly.
He does every year.
I think they do that regularly.
It was, it was an issue of contention in a recent harbor committee meeting where a person was appealing their relocation and relocations during the past summer. And that was all decided by the harbor master.
They purposely moved them around because of the size of boats and things like that, but...
I just want to be super clear on something that, maybe I'm getting it wrong, but the, by adding this piece of it to the deauthorization area at this time has nothing to do with moving the moorings. What this is suggesting is...
That's correct.
It's, I was going to say...
Down the road, if the Lyman Morse project does move forward, that's a potential issue that we're going to have to...
Correct. And the Army Corps, my guess is going to say to the town of Camden Harbor Master, we want to see your plan on where these 10 or 20 or 16 moorings are going to go.
I want to see the plan.
And you will see it.
I don't, I'm, it's, I'm concerned about a plan being sent to the Army Corps that hasn't been reviewed at all at the town level.
But we're not doing that.
And now it seems like we have an all...
There was no plan sent to the Army Corps.
But there will be. We should just have, I believe that the greatest chance of success for this project for Lyman Morse and for everyone is to immediately have it be as public as possible so that we can talk about the benefits and the drawbacks and really address, you know, what the concerns are. And yeah, there are going to be people that are going to go ballistic about this or that and they're, we're going to just figure out, is it a vocal minority, is it not? It's, it's going to be a big deal, but it's going to be, there's also going to be the opportunity for people to start thinking about it, to feel included right from the beginning and not find out down the road, like, oh shoot, that was one of my moorings. I think we just have a, we should try very hard to make this as public as possible and collaborative as soon as possible so we can come up with the very best mooring relocation plan.
And what I, I guess I can do is talk to Steve Pixley about bringing that to the harbor committee if need be.
And even more than just the harbor committee, but the general community and, you know, let Josh give his feel to everybody.
This is our third meeting on this item and...
No, but in a more...
Hasn't been anyone from the public. And I've talked to people from the harbor committee, they know that these are on the agenda.
I've talked to a lot of people from, it's not so much about, this, this setting is a very, it's, it's not the greatest brainstorming session. If we move the project too far along by only in this kind of a setting where it's like we're in control and this kind of this weird thing, I think we're going to make too many people uncomfortable. And if we bring in more of a relaxed workshop environment right away, you know, some, some the harbor committee, but, but also just making the community feel comfortable, invite Lyman Morse to say, this is what we know so far, this is what we're thinking. And the more people can be involved right from the beginning.
Maybe I can try to work on organizing something like that.
Yeah, we can, especially, but...
I agree.
All I've heard is that this, this potential relocation of moorings is something we absolutely have to address downstream if we, when we address this project or something else. Right now, we're, I don't, there's no plan. There's no physical plan that I'm aware of, but the development of same can be absolutely in the public. There's no problem with that at all.
We should do it, we should involve the community though.
Sure.
And not just say, well, there's no plan yet so we don't have to get feedback, but really develop it in a very, long before there's a plan.
But, but, but... Some of this is a little...
Jeremy, that's one issue that will come to bear on a very complicated project or projects. It's just one issue. There are many, many others that will come to bear that need to be brought at the same time to the public for consideration. Yeah, I know. I'm just saying when you do that, it's, now is not the moment for that.
I believe it's now is absolutely the moment for it.
I disagree.
It's, the, the public here is a resource in making this project successful. It is not a liability to be managed. It's, I mean, everybody's a liability a little bit. It's going to be, you know, people are going to get upset and, but, but the more we open it up early, not ju, I'm not saying the town should lead it, but we should just facilitate public input and not try to make any more decisions. We are, because decisions do keep coming up and the more we can talk about those things before they come up.
I think we have to be a little careful on some of the conversation because some of this, especially if we get into a development agreement with Lyman and Morse, some of this is going to happen in an executive session and has to, some of it has to.
It does.
And then, and then the town will vote on some of that. But I, I mean, I understand your point and I think we can work on trying to get a little, little more public involvement, but we can't go way into a lot of detail on what all of this will entail.
There's, there are really no secrets at this point. The, the public knows, we got, they got a grant for a bunch of money to do something with a lot of potential. It's not, you can look at that and see the amount of, I don't see anything that needs to be...
Can I say something? It's, I think we're all in agreement, but this, well, I, I think we need to have those conversations, but right now this discussion is about, do we tell the Army Corps that we're willing to do that triangle? That's, that's it?
I know, and I'm fine with the triangle, but then on the next agenda, when there's another triangle and there's another little part of it, I'm trying to say it before. No, there will be more things that come up though. There are just going to continue to be things that come up. We're going to learn more. There may be things that the town has to support. There may be things the select board needs to do, right? It's, we should just try to get out in front of it and not just wait for the next triangle.
Next crisis.
It's a cool thing. We shouldn't...
Yeah, yeah. I think message received. I think, I think we all agree with you. I think we all agree with you. Just a question of timing and when, and we have to do it. I absolutely agree. The public needs to be involved. We need to build confidence in the public that this, we're not running around the streets making decisions for them without their inclusion, whether it's harbor committee or a public meeting, whatever it is. I totally agree. I just don't, I just, all I'm saying is there's no plan, quote unquote, for those moorings.
Steve says he has a plan, so there's either a plan or there isn't a plan. So we can't, I mean, that's, then we're really going to have to...
I think he has some idea of how that might work. He does it every year, whether it's a physical plan...
He does it every year and he's got X number that can, he says will go in one area and X number will go in another area.
It's just so different than every year. To compare it to what he does every year.
Owners.
What?
He wants to work with the owners of those moorings.
Yes. That's what he usually does.
To try to get some sort of agreement before anything is...
Right. And Steve will be a great person actually to be, to talk about, actually in public too. He's like, I don't know, I've enjoyed talking to Steve about this project and I think the public will too and...
I think all five of us agree with you.
But it's not the same as what we do every year. It's not even close.
I think we need to maximize to every extent we can, public involvement in every step along the way to the extent we can. There are some legal issues to deal with, but I, I don't think anybody's disagreeing. We're just talking about the timing of that and how we do it. And the purpose, as Mark suggested, right now we have a motion and a second to approve this triangle and we can talk about it for another hour and a half, but I think we should move on the, on that vote.
That we may or may not need to actually vote on, but...
You don't want to vote it?
No, it's just, it's not clear whether we actually need to vote on it. It's not...
Yeah, I'm not sure that we do, to tell you the truth.
I mean, there's a motion on the table. I say in a second. I say you...
Yeah, I say, just make it formal. All those in favor of the motion?
I guess, yeah.
Five zero. Did you raise hands? Did you raise hands, yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay, it's five zero, Kendall.
I think it's...
I voted yes.
Yeah, I saw five hands.
But it's not, I'm, for the triangle, just the triangle, not the mooring. I don't, I don't love the whole response to the, to the Army Corps.
I agree with you, the triangles is, the only thing we're approving is that little gray triangle being included in the meets and bounds.
And I will work with Steve.
In the meets and bounds and we will pursue looking at the mooring thing later on.
I don't know, that's the right way to do it. I think it should be more like...
Harbor Committee?
I, then, now you're, now you're walking down a place where every year he does six and seven, eight moorings and he has to move them. There's nothing that says it has to go through, and we want to change the whole process and modify the harbor ordinance? We can do that. It's a whole nother discussion.
Yeah.
You and I are saying very, very different things. So the idea that we all agree is really, you're like doubling down on wanting to make sure that this can all happen behind closed doors and not giving up any right to do that.
No, 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 you're wrong. All I'm saying is the timing of bringing, in this situation where it is driven by a project that's different than what he does year to year. What I heard was in bringing mooring relocation, if it's related to this project and needs to be brought to the public, I totally agree with you. And it, and it will.
I'm talking about the project because the project is very different. It's going to be a really big deal.
Then I agree with you. We'll, we'll definitely bring it through harbor committee or a public hearing, whatever we have to do. When we get to the point of identifying that the project is moving forward, if it does, that there needs to be mooring relocation, that has to be discussed with everybody in the public.
And it should probably be a workshop of some sort and not a public hearing. Nothing requires a public hearing.
Exactly, like a question and answer, like just people can come and...
A workshop.
I'm at workshop. I'm at workshop.
And not even the thing where we say, sometimes the public comes to our workshops and we say, well, this is just for the select board to talk, not a workshop like that, like a public workshop.
And I think also just briefly to just, to Allison's point, there was an article in Village Soup that was like, the Camden Select Board, rah rah, the Lyman Morse project. And it made it sound like all of us had just sold the town up the river. And I, that's, I mean, I'm a journalist, I get it. Sometimes we don't interpret things correctly, but I think that we need to be really clear. I try to not be a person that misses, but we all have our moments. I think we need to be really clear about the fact that this is really early days, that we are working with an interest that Lyman Morse has, a business in our, in our community has, but that we're, we're doing our due diligence.
Not approved the project.
We're skeptical that we're, this is just step by step by step.
No, no. The project is...
Jim just summarized that so beautifully.
And I mean, the headline was like Camden Select Board endorses, I mean, it was like that word.
Voted to approve, like...
And you know, the reporter...
It had nothing to do with Lyman Morse or with...
The reporter probably didn't even write that headline.
Probably not.
Oh, I'm sure they didn't. I'm positive they didn't. I work for the news organization.
So don't put a lot, don't put a lot of weight on the news.
It's just...
And they're moving to Camden. Welcome Courier Publications. We are going to, that's really awesome that they're coming.
It's awesome that they're coming here.
It really, really is.
There's been no endorsement.
Where are they coming?
They're moving, the Courier and the Free Press are combining into the old Tibbetts building.
Yes, I saw that, yeah.
That's a pretty awesome thing for Camden.
Yeah.
And they want to have a more central location so more people can come and they can have meetings there and that's a, I'm overjoyed.
Thank you, thank you. We have one last agenda item to take these, these two handsome gentlemen in the form of Mr. Cassas and Mr. Baridi to come and talk about, something about solid waste.
Owen just went up for the stop and go and got Gary's finest slate.
So, nice to see you all. Pleasure, pleasure. I'm Owen Cassas from the Chair of the Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation. So what we're doing here tonight is just kind of meeting with you all. Brady will let you know some of the projects we've been working on, some of the things we anticipate coming down the pike and just wanted to make ourselves available if you had any questions about anything that we do over in Rockport at Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation.
I think you just kicked the, maybe not you. I think I was, my first instinct is that Owen did it.
Clap too hard?
But, I think it's turning back on, but it just, something...
I don't think any, I don't think it... Brought to you by Apple.
I get up here and everything becomes unplugged.
Anyway, this is Baridi. He is our new facilities manager.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Jenna.
Jenna. Well, good evening and esteemed board. I appreciate being here tonight. I wanted to first start off by just saying thank you for offering me the opportunity to serve the community as its new manager at Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation. And I've been here since the 16th of August, so as I approach my four months here, there are a few things that we've gotten accomplished, hitting the ground running at the Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation. We had a few things, but I wanted to just be clear for the residents and citizens who are looking tonight. Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation is basically two things. One, it is a landfill where waste disposal for construction and demolition material. And the other aspect of it is that it is a transfer station, which in fact is a transfer site or transfer point where the recyclable items are coming in, such as all the household recyclables, metals, appliances, even brush. And they're being processed at our location in Rockport and then they're being transported to other locations where they in fact can be recycled. So basically what we're doing is we're diverting those items from the waste stream and preparing and packaging and processing them so they can go to off-site locations where they can be recycled. So we're not actually having recycling occurring at our location. And the reason I thought it was important to say that is because in the three months or so that I've been there, a lot of our customers think that, and citizens who come in, that when they sort their recyclables, that we in fact are recycling them. And I just wanted to be clear that we're diverting them from waste disposal and preparing and processing them to go to markets so they could, can be recycled. So that is the mission for Midcoast Solid Waste. And what I wanted to ensure is that the continued value that the Midcoast Solid Waste is to the four towns in this area, I wanted to ensure that it has continued viability going forward because for waste disposal, we're limited only to construction and demolition material. And that's fine in our landfill, but all of the things that we are processing and transforming off-site from household trash to all the recyclable items, from brush to metal to recyclables. The places where they're going to be recycled, well, those markets are depressed at this point and our cost for processing and transporting those items to those locations, what that commodity is worth and its value barely covers our transportation expenses. In fact, because we're still separating our recyclables and providing a clean product or commodity to those markets, most of the surrounding communities now have decided that they will single stream or combine or co-mingle those items along with their trash because those other markets are not as viable as they once were. Now, what I've also noticed is that there is a lot of pride and passion and I'm very thankful for that and what the citizens are bringing to Midcoast. And we're going to continue that under my time here. But I do want to...
Except for glass. We process glass on-site.
Well, yeah, that's true. We do. We're not recycling the glass. It's not going off-site. It's being crushed and used because there are no markets for the glass. But that aside, what I wanted to just ensure of the residents is, is that we're going to continue to ensure that we make it through these issues as it relates to recycling because I think that a lot of our citizens know by now that there's been a sea change in the way that recycling has been processed in the United States, in the West, in Europe,[1675.75] and in the Middle East, in Asia. The biggest taker for all of that material, of course, people may be aware, has been China, and that has gone away now. So until America finds another way to, to deal with its recyclables in-house, so to speak, internally, we're going to have some fluctuation. And what I wanted to ensure while I'm here and ensure the customers and the board here tonight is that I'm going to be working very hard and passionately to ensure that we continue as we have been. And if we have to change and modify it anyway, the boards will be completely aware and understand the dynamics, they'll be very clear as they will be clear to the public. And when we make any decision that we think we need to, to ensure our continued viability and ability to keep our rates flat and be able to cover our operational costs, that people will be well-informed. And I think I can do this as I approach my 42nd year in solid waste management. So, I think that that is an advantage that I bring and an advantage that I receive is I get to live and work here in Maine, and I love it, and I really appreciate it and thank you. So, does anyone have any specific question? Yes, sir, Mr. Ratner.
I've got, whoa, Mr. Ratner, my father's here.
Okay, Ma, sorry.
Yeah, I always look around for my father when somebody says, Mr. Ratner. One, welcome to Maine.
Thank you.
Love it, too. Two questions. Number one, my wife is very, very proud and determined to make sure that she separates all our recyclables, really. She's committed to that. Our basement and garage are filled with different kinds of bags and bins so that we, we never have time to bring it over there, and when we do, it's overwhelming. So, appreciate that. Is, the first question, is that still the most economical thing for you to do? Because I know so many people have gone to single-stream recycling. Is it still to the advantage? Because my wife will do it forever if it's the most beneficial thing to do. Is that still the best way to do it?
That is still the best way to do it. I mean, to have clean and pristine recyclables sorted that passionately and that thoroughly is a good thing. It's a good thing for the environment, it's a good thing for us. The issue that we're facing is that our volumes that we produce make us sort of specialized, and we don't have the large aggregate of material that we can get to market and profit or get a return that offsets our cost for processing that material, having the location that people can come, the personnel that process it and everything, and then getting it packaged, and then getting it trucked out to those locations. Because the markets are depressed for that clean product, we barely are able to cover our processing and transportation costs.
And, and I, I understand that, and I know the market's depressed, I know China backed out, and, you know, it's, it's still, I think, we do the best we can. You know, we're a small town, and, you know, whatever we need to do, we should do the best, best recycling, resorting we can, the best we can with waste disposal. My second question is a more personal thing. I've noticed that of all the things I do in town or anywhere these days, the only place I'm required to pay cash is when you bring some stuff to the thing. And it's so easy, I mean, virtually everywhere you go now, everybody has a square set up to the thing. Is there, it would, I think it would be so much easier for your people working there and for the clients of the waste, waste plant, of the waste...
Facility.
Transfer station, yes.
Sorry, can't think of the word. Is to try and bring, bring that in so that it's not a cash only basis?
It's my intention to do exactly that. Yes, sir. It's right, it is somewhat of a disadvantage even for us to be mainly a cash-only handling of process. I would like to go as far away from cash and become as cashless as possible, not only just for the convenience, but it's just more efficient and productive for us to do so. And we're going to put that in place. In fact, I'm charged now to bring my 2021 budget in, and that's one of the things I'll be asking for and I'm looking at. We had some other internal issues as relates to compliance at our landfill and things I had to address when I first got here, and we've gotten those things addressed. So now I have the ability now to concentrate on things such as that, not to say that it was any less important, but that along with a couple of other things. The, if you, as people know, our swap shop is closed for the season, and we're going to be preparing that when we reopen for the season in April of 20, that we have another facility, larger, enclosed, climate-controlled, nice and everything for the people to come. So, I wanna have a more dynamic presence for the swap shop and those, as another aspect of our waste diversion strategy.
And one other, one last question, and something my wife brings up, and her, and I don't know that there's any way around it, but, because so much of the business is companies, corporations, whatever, work during the week, and construction people, but only having Saturdays as opposed to not being open on Sundays for homeowners who are trying to clean out garages and stuff like that to bring everything, is there any time when there will ever be any open times on a Sunday?
That's God days, Mark.
Come on.
Just, again...
Good comment, good comment.
No, lots of people do, or Mondays, some people, there are a lot of, there are a
lot of Monday proponents out there, also some advocates for evening hours.
Just a question, it's based on...
I've heard a comment from others.
Yeah, people that...
After-hours drop-off, like the lagary also, something to consider.
Jenna.
Mine is a very myopic question as we're talking about most, as Brady's talking, mostly larger kind of macro things. What happened to the demo bin?
Yes, we actually had the demo bin up front and the metal bin up front.
And I noticed that it was missing.
And, yes, that is one of the things I did, it's a command decision I made that I knew wouldn't be necessarily the most popular thing, but it was necessary in this regard first and foremost. It created a large liability for Midco Solid Waste.
So?
One, it caused it, impeded and had some issue with traffic flow. You may notice that we don't really have the adequate signage and the striping for track, traffic direction and signage. And the way that our facility works, we're limited to one weigh scale where people have to enter to weigh in and then exit and weigh back off, so it's two-way. And where the gatehouse is and where they were located, when vehicles got, when people got out after they weighed out to leave to pay, they'd have to park those trucks, those trailers as cars were coming in around and as people were trying to go through. The other, and that was for the demo. Now, I also knew, and I still understand this and I empathize with it, that for those that may have had a physical issue about getting their waste out on the landfill proper, and that's why I was there for convenience.
Right.
One of the other concerns I was told by my staff was that people had some concerns about nails in their tires, the topography of the landfill and their access up there. But for me, those are things that I feel like I needed to address to better accommodate access for everyone up there. Because when someone was, might have been limited in their locomotion or physicality to get those items out of their car into that bin, if it's just a matter of that, then they can get their car up to the landfill with a better ease and protection for any issues as it relates to flats. They can get out of the car and then just dump those things in the landfill right there as if that was the larger bin.
But don't you have to drive a fair amount into the land, like you...
Yes, you do have to navigate into the landfill, that's true. And what that was doing was giving us sort of another point where disposal was occurring right at our entrance, where egress and ingress was occurring.
Well, the tough thing I, I feel, and I, again, I, this is a little fine point operations thing.
No, it's not fine point, it's a miss, it's something that's missed by people, and I can tell you that, as someone who's used the transfer station for a long time, I totally understand what you're saying about traffic flow.
I don't necessarily agree that I've ever seen it in a hazardous position and all that, we usually go on Saturdays when it's packed, that's kind of, so I totally, I trust your operations. I just wonder how I'm gonna feel the day that I have to drive my little sedan into that landfill in the middle of the winter in Maine, and I can't get in there.
Well, that's because it's our responsibility to ensure that there is an all-weather road. So that's my charge to ensure that you will have an ease of access. The other thing I need to point out is that last month, we had an inspection from our insurance provider. And when he came out on-site and saw that those two things were relocated, he actually gave us a plus for that because we had been failing in that. That was something he wanted, and our insurance carrier had been stating for a few decades that those items should have been gone. And he said that I did the right thing, although it wasn't the most popular thing, it's still necessary because it minimized our liabilities.
Right, and we have to do that a lot sitting on this board, so I understand that feeling of doing the right, the right thing, to the best of our judgment.
Yes.
I just wonder, I mean, I will be very curious to see how this is accomplished in a way that's safe.
Yes, and I...
And I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm really thrilled that you're here, and I...
I appreciate me, giving me an opportunity to address it publicly.
It will be very interesting.
But yes, we're going to work on that, that is my charge, and I'm, and I can tell you, I've built many all-weather roads and we're going to do that. In fact, we're actually poised to build a new road to access the landfill from another location. That'll be something we'll be doing after the first of the year as well.
That's great, and I really like that you're keeping up with markets and that you have an eye on the swap shop. I will be curious to see how that's financed, financed, but I think that's a really neat thing.
Right now, it's just gonna be subsidized by our operations.
I always support the diversion of waste from the landfill whenever possible, and that was another thing about the demo bin, was it gave people the opportunity, whether it was okay or not, and I know that there's, but it was sort of a, don't, you know, look the other way kind of thing, it gave people an opportunity to salvage, you know, an item that would otherwise, and I know that's...
I wasn't going to touch on that subject, but that was another issue, too.
I know that's a can of worms, but I'm just gonna throw it out there.
We are not able to allow scavenging or what is referred to in, in, no, it's, it's not salvaging, it's scavenging from the landfill, which is called picking. We can't allow our customers to come in and take items out of the demo bin or the metal bin. That's why I'm saying that we're going to enhance the swap shop in such a way when we reopen, that I think it would make that whole issue in that area moot as it relates to having something that I feel had become an attractive nuisance.
Real quick, was your question about financing, about the items that get deposited there or the...
No, about building this all-climate-controlled wonder...
Building already exists.
Don't worry about it.
Yes, yes, no, I'm sorry.
All-weather road and...
No, 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 that building already exists on-site.
I don't think I'm gonna get where I wanna go right now.
It's the blue building, it's the blue building right next to the...
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
Allison. Yes, so, I, serving on the Midco Solid Waste Board, I don't have a lot of questions, and I think it does get confusing when we turn it into these boards rather than just the Midco Solid Waste Board, because it gets confusing about who's in charge, but I can't since the topic of the demo bin has come up and I didn't bring, I didn't bring it up, let the record state, but the feedback that I have gotten from many people is, most people don't notice right away that it's gone because you go in there and you think it might just have been, oh, they're just emptying it. But, every person, or, I have to say, for me, 50% of the people in this community probably have a story about something that was in this bin that was discarded and was gonna be thrown in that landfill, and they turned it into something useful. And so, every time that, you know, some, somebody pays to bring something there and it gets put there because they may not recognize the value in it, and then somebody else is able to turn it into something, that, that goes to the heart of what our community is about, and it goes to the heart of what our, the mission of the organization is about, which is reducing. And so, I think the liability of having to drive into the landfill, too, I know for some people, that is really, really nerve-wracking. And, anyway, I have heard feedback about it, and it saddens me to see the additional items that are now being buried under the bulldozer. But, we'll continue to, I know Brady and I are very much aligned in terms of values of waste production, and that was one of the reasons we were excited.
That's what I was saying earlier, with the swap shop and the things that I had planned for it, I, I think that it will offset the loss of the demo bin or people being able to salvage from that point when we enhance the location, the parking, the signage, and the space, which will be as large as, as this space, and heat it, and possibly if they can have the volunteers, a year-round operation, just as we are.
But that will always depend on somebody else recognizing the value in it, and most of us...
Recognize the value of it, and I feel like I should drive that, I should be the cheerleader of that.
Recognizing the value of the item that's being discarded. So even when the swap shop is open, a lot of people put things in the demo bin because they don't recognize the value. But we'll, everybody knows I love talking about the demo bin, and we do not want to spend the rest of the night talking about that, it's gonna matter.
You have a meeting tomorrow.
Um, no, I'm surprised that nobody's asking about the assessments and things like that. Usually the big concern for the towns is, when are we gonna get our assessments, when are we gonna know what the budget is, is Camden gonna have to pay more or less, what's your long-term vision, are we looking at...
Well, our, our meeting for Midcoast is tomorrow evening at 6:30 at this very location.
No, it's in Rockland.
Rockport.
Rockland at the Opera, Opera...
House.
Opera, Opera House.
Yeah, I know where the meeting is, but I'm just wondering like...
Yes, I misspoke, that's right, because it's, we had to reschedule, that's right.
In terms of a vision for financing.
So we'll be talking about some of those, those items, I'm sure, tomorrow at our board meeting.
Let me ask about, I'll ask the budget then. Knowing that recycling is not paying what it used to be and actually may at some point cost us money.
Yes.
Then, we're gonna have to get used to a little more, contributing more budget from the towns. Or will we...
It's already costing us.
Well, that's just, well, I'm glad you have...
We're actually losing money. It's costing me more to process that than it does to dispose of our waste. That's something that I've seen just in the short tenure I've been here, and that's something I'm gonna have to address because we, you know, we, that's, that's not, we can't sustain that. And there, there is a company that is, and I was at, in Bangor yesterday attending, Monday attending a conference, and they said that they would take our waste, our recycling only if they can get our waste all in a single stream, and they would sort and recycle there. And the offer of per tonnage is, would be less than what I'm paying just to, to transport my trash.
Was that, is that the company that we...
I didn't wanna say any names, but what I plan to do is, I've met with all of the people that represent the waste of energy and landfills in the, in the past three months, and especially at one location on this past Monday. And because of what I know and the fact that I ran those similar operations myself, I don't have to depend on their dog and pony. All I need to do is see it for myself, and not, no one has to tell me anything because I've run those things. I've just come out of Baltimore, where I ran that transfer station and landfill for the last two years, and we were doing $600,000 in revenue a month, several tons more than the 6,100 tons we do in a year. We did 10 times that in one month. So, what they're talking about doing for what we have to offer is gonna be easy. What I need to find out is I need to verify if what they say is real and what they promise can be delivered. And I think that as soon as I get on-site and tour these facilities, then I can come back and make that assessment as to what I think would be our place to go because our contract that we have now for our waste disposal at the waste energy plant expires March 31 of 2021. And we need to renew a new contract, and I needed to start that process probably last year. So that's something else I have to deal with. I have to find out where will we be taking our, our trash April 1 of 2021. And I need to look at what's the most viable. Right now, we're hauling it 85 miles to Portland, and we have two locations here that are within 50 miles. One does it one way and one does it another, but again, I need to find out what's most cost-effective. But because what we initially started off with about the passion people have for their recycling and the diversion of that, as I said, that's all we do is divert it, we're just waste diversion at our location, but those markets, I'm not sure if they're going to come back anytime in the next several years.
I would suggest that, there's too much waste in this world, and I can't see them coming back. I don't, I don't know that we're a very wasteful race. And unfortunately, I don't know that it's coming back because of running...
Without extended producer responsibility.
Running out of space and running out of, you know, the ability to deal with it. One thing I am curious about, how is the composting? Because composting...
Oh, the scrap dogs.
Just real quick, can we just pause that for one second? So, this industry is very much subject to forces outside of the control of Midco Solid Waste, et cetera, et cetera. One of the few things that the state is attempting to do is mimic some things we've seen in Quebec where a fee is assessed to, it's the Quebec model, yeah?
That's what we talked about at the beginning of, that's the thing Stephanie was...
A fee is assessed to the producer of an item because we eventually have to dispose of it and the cost of disposal is not factored into that.
We talked about that beginning of the meeting, there's a thing in Maine happening.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's...
Sign on. Right, actually, I talked to Sarah Lakeman today, she gave the present...
She's in Bangor at the conference, MNR conference.
You guys were in Bangor, too?
No, Sarah, I talked to Sarah Lakeman today because, right, emailed with her because she, there's a Camden citizen who's interested...
Cool, well then, I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that, we don't have to talk about it.
Oh, yes, yes.
And then, on the decision to go to South Portland with EcoMaine, it is a haul, it is, we pay more in transportation. I'm assuming the facilities are Perk and Fiberite, we've been observing Fiberite and try to see about their viability. Great to see that Perk actually made it through their lack of state subsidy. The big thing is, if we can get it there, we will save on transportation costs, it's viability of the facility.
I was here when we made the, when we, we looked at Fiberite before they were up and running. I remember, there was a lot of those meetings, I remember that.
My dad's fault, hope.
Taylor, you have anything?
He's very good at explaining things, I don't have any questions.
I agree, there's numerous, numerous challenges to solid waste throughout the planet, and you haven't fixed the best solution yet. There are trends, the trends happen in a cycle every two or three years, that's, makes your job much more difficult.
Any questions on the relationship between your board and our board and what's asked to do at the certifier?
Well, the one question is, because I know Bob and Allison are there, and the three of us, I don't, you may get more involved, I think you know more about it, we don't get involved much, is there anything the rest of us can do to help you? Because it's a tough job, is there anything Taylor, Jen, and I can do that aren't covered by Allison and Bob?
No, just a continued support. I mean, I haven't been in a community such as this where it's so beloved... I mean, I haven't been in a community such as this where it's so beloved and supported by its community, by the vendors, and even by the visitors. I just want to prepare because I came at the tail end of the peak time of the year for this area with the tourists. I want to be ready when the population increases at Midcoast. And we're putting things in place that I think that people will see the value of what they're subsidizing and supporting. And that's, that's what's most important to me, that people feel they're getting a return on their investment.
I think, I think the idea of expanding the swap shop is terrific as my wife has used that, donated to that lots of time. And it's frustrating when it's closed, the fact that it could be expanded is a great idea because there's just, there's too much waste that we don't, that we don't deal with properly. Oh, I started to ask about, I started to ask about scrap dogs, yes.
We're not a composting operation. We're just a grinding.
But you have scrap dogs there that's been collecting compost, correct?
The food waste collection.
Oh, okay. That's what is called composting, is that?
Well, because they compost it after.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's learning.
No, as I understand, there's a grant and the owner, he's not, no longer?
Davis did get a grant, but that's not really, doesn't really matter to us.
What we do at our facility, that grant does-
Well, that's just another aspect of our diversion.
Has, has the collection, the compost there been, because we use it, we use them at our house.
Scrap dogs.
Scrap dogs. And I can tell you that separating the compost from the regular trash is, and realizing how much of that was in our trash before, which has cut it down tremendously, it's a great thing. I'm curious, are people using it at the waste facility yet?
Yes, no, they are using it and it is well-used. Davis is having to come and replace the five-gallon buckets all the time. And he's getting a very good volume out of there. I think that what he's doing where he's composting it.
Yeah.
Because our site just serves as a transfer point or diversion, you know, waste diversion point. That's what threw me off because we don't compost, but yes.
I know that their service is great. This year, you know, the first year we got compost back, my wife grew some, lots of big plants this year, some that produced better than they'd ever produced before. And it's like, whoa, this is pretty cool.
Yes, and I've ran those kind of operations, but they were several tons a day where food waste is being used in Arkansas from Walmart. And so what we're doing is small, but it's viable. And I think that we're going to continue to produce it to where he can, you know, enhance his business.
Anybody else have any questions for Bree while we have his bring attention? Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you again.
I don't really have him too close to force to see the trees. But no, thank you, thank you, thank you, Owen, thank you.
Nice to meet you, thank you. I feel like I gave you a hard time and I, it's just one of those things that was like, whoa, holy smokes.
Do you want me to come up and give you a hard time?
The hell be fun, but I'm trying to think of which thing to pick on you for.
My hair?
Owen should actually, while Owen's here, everybody should give him a huge thank you for probably being the most helpful, well, we won't get into comparing past chairs of boards because that's not useful.
Sorry, John.
But, oh, right, yeah.
Sorry, John.
Right, sorry, John, you were great, too. We miss you. Come back anytime. But Owen really, we, you know, we're without a manager for quite a while and Owen has just been an outstanding chair and done so much work and-
Especially the transition, Allison. I think when we had the transition before Buridi came on board, that was a tough time.
Everyone wants to go home. Do you have questions you don't have to like spackle me with?
I'd like to know what the problem is with your hair that you just asked about.
Oh, that's a long story.
Go to the left instead of the right.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, it's kidding.
We'll talk about that later, okay? One-on-one, okay?
Any questions about corporate governance, how your board relates to, come on, I love this stuff.
That's not, there's no, there's no productivity in that.